Good evening. I'm going to open the town meeting, Halifax Town Meeting, May 13th, 2024. Can I ask you all to please stand? We'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If I could ask you, please, to remain standing. Just like to ask for a moment of silence, please, for that poor man lost his life yesterday, Sunday. Could all just have a moment of silence. Thank you so very much. Please be seated. The 2024 Annual Town Meeting is hereby called the Order. I'm going to do some introductions now. We have our selectmen on the left, along with Mr. Haddad, our town council, and of course, our town clerk, and our finance committee here to my right. We're going to have, as we have done in the past, God knows how many years, we are going to do Articles 1 through 4 that handle the budget upfront together, and then we'll do the remaining Articles by lottery. Okay, just a few things for those members that haven't been to town meeting before. What we usually do is, in order to make a point, ask a question, you raise your hand. I will call on you. We'll have one of our runners from this side or this side will come over and give you the mic, or you can come up here to the mic in the center. Need you to identify yourself by your name and your address, and we'll go from there. Okay, entertain a motion right now to dispense with the reading of the warrant. If I could have a motion.
So.
I have a motion in a second to dispense with the reading of the warrant. Motion's been made. All those in favor, raise your green card to dispense with the reading. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Motion carries the dispense. That was just a warm-up, so we know how to do the cards. Now entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the Constable's Return.
So.
In a second.
Second.
Once again, I have a motion in a second to dispense with the reading of the Constable's Return. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Motion passes. All the... We'll get ahold of the IT gentleman and get the closed caption going. Okay, while we're all seated and waiting for that, I'd like to say a special thank you. Get a round of applause, if I could, please, for Sandy Nolan, as this will be her last town meeting as the Halifax Town Accountant. She'll be retiring at the end of the fiscal year. Really appreciate all the hard work she's done. Thank you, Sandy. Wherever you are, wherever Sandy. Okay, now, there's two other things I want to make you aware of. There's a couple errors on page 11 of the warrant. The second column, it's a typo. It should read FY23 and not repeat FY22. The blue handout you have identifies two corrections in the water department's budget. This also represents an updated total for public works and the total operating budget. Okay, so once again, any questions or comments? Raise your hand, I'll call on you. And from that point, any questions you have, we'll go through the moderator. I will find out, get the answer to your question by calling on whoever either proposed the article or has an explanation to the amounts. Okay, seeing...
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, where are you?
Over here.
Oh, sorry, John. Yes.
It is past 6:45, which is the scheduled time for our special town meeting, so I would move that we adjourn the annual town meeting to take up the special town meeting and then to return back to the annual town meeting.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion in a second to adjourn the annual town meeting and open up the special. I have to do that by a vote, please. All those in favor, please hold up your green card. All those opposed, please hold up your red card. Motion passes, we'll go right to the special town meeting.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Bruno.
Special town meeting has only one article, and I would move that we pass over this article.
Okay. What to do? Do I have a motion for that?
Yep.
In a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Before we vote on, if you'd like, could you give us an explanation on that, please?
I certainly will, yes. So, this article was proposed by the school committee as a placeholder prior to the approval of the warrant. The school administration was at that time anticipating a deficit in the current year's budget, but after further review has determined that they will be able to cover their costs for fiscal year '24, so therefore, this article is not necessary.
Okay, so I have a motion in a second. All those in favor of passing over the special town meeting, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Motion passes.
Mr. Moderator. That concludes the special town meeting. I would move that we dissolve the special town meeting and return to the annual town meeting.
There's a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
So, motion in a second to dissolve the special town meeting and return to the annual town meeting. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we're going to be addressing Articles 1 through 4.
Article 1. I would move that we... I would move Article 1 as presented in the warrant.
Okay, could... Would you like to speak to that, sir?
Sure. Well, we have to have a motion first, excepting... I mean, a second and a vote.
Okay, I have a motion in a second.
Second. John, can you get real close to the microphone?
Oh, sorry.
Real close.
Oh, me? How's that? Is that better? All right, I'm sorry. Okay.
Okay, we have a motion in a second of Article 1. I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
We could start again. So, we're back at the annual town meeting, and Article 1, I move Article 1 as printed in the warrant.
And I seconded it.
Okay, there's a motion in a second to move Article 1 as presented in the warrant. Hold. Do I have a... Yes, did you want to speak to that? Finance committee?
A recommendation.
You have a recommendation? And the board of selectmen?
Yes.
Okay, let's vote on it then. We have a motion in a second to move the Article 1 as presented in the warrant. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card.
Mr. Moderator.
Motion passes. Yes.
On Article 1, which is to town officer reports from town committees, I have just a few comments that I'd like to make as from the board of selectmen.
Yes, sir. Please go ahead.
So, as explained by the finance committee in their report, town revenues are impacted by a lack of new growth and limited increase in state funding this year. Moreover, we are in a very inflationary environment with costs increasing. Despite these challenges, the finance committee is recommending a balanced budget which does preserve Halifax's current service level. We've already handled the special town meeting. It was again scheduled simply because there was a question of whether or not it would be needed. It was not. The agenda for the annual town meeting has only a limited number of Articles for town meetings consideration. All of the capital expense Articles are to be considered at the same time in one Article. These requests have been vetted by the capital planning committee, finance committee, and board of selectmen. All are recommended to be approved at this meeting. And finally, our agenda also contains an article recommending to town meeting, the town meeting accept the provisions of the Community Preservation Act. A full presentation of this article will be provided by selectman Sealy. In short, though, acceptance of the Community Preservation Act by the town would establish a fund for use by the town to accomplish future projects such as preserving open space. I'll leave the rest of that for selectman Sealy, and that concludes our report. Thank you.
Okay, any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 1, once again, please raise your... Move right on to Article 2. You're right, we already voted on that.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
Can everybody hear me okay? All right. I moved at the town vote to amend the wage and personnel bylaw as presented in Attachment A. You guys should have Attachment A. It's the thick white packet of paper.
Okay, I have a motion in a second.
Second.
Okay.
Can I speak to that?
Yes, please.
Okay, the changes being presented, assistant aligning the bylaw with current day-to-day practices. Of the changes to note, there's additional personal day, going from two days to three, updating the bereavement leave, and a 2% cost of living adjustment for fiscal year '25. We are also adjusting any of the wages that did not get an increase for fiscal year '24 by 4%. The idea there, 2% for last year, and then 2% for this coming year, and this is all being done to remain consistent with comparable communities in our compensation and our benefits.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any questions or comments regarding Article 2? Yes, sir. If you could... Could you stand up, please, sir? Your name and your address, please.
Can you... Sir, can you come up, either come up to the microphone or have... Just everybody needs to hear you.
Van Donlen, 201, Cranberry Drive, Halifax. One question I had was comparable towns. Who's picking the comparable towns? Do you well see all the... I mean, so... But it's got people who are comparable type towns of size, so there's nothing in here that says anything about who picks that. Do you guys pick the towns you're going to compare to, or is it a...
Okay, what I wanted to say was, who picks the towns?
All right, I'll attempt to get a name for that.
So, he was wondering where we got the towns from, where our comparable communities were. We got this classification and compensation study through a grant, through a state agency, so they look at things like population, different demographics, to make sure that that doesn't indeed happen, that we're not comparing ourselves to the more affluent communities or the larger communities or anything like that. So, these are folks that do this as a full-time job, to make sure that we're getting accurate comparisons to communities in the area that are our size, that are close to our demographics, to make sure that they're apples to apples and not apples to oranges.
Thank you, Mr. Sealy. Yes, sir. Could you... Yes, come up to the mic. Your name and your address, sir.
Before Steve speaks, I just want to remind everybody, we do have microphone runners. If you raise your hand, we can get the microphone to you guys to save you the steps, if you want.
You have to talk close.
My name's Steve McFawn. I live at 47 Indian Path Road. I just have one question for everybody. If you didn't get a promotion, how many people here got a $24,000 raise in the last two years?
Please. Yes, sir.
Gordon Andrews, 244 Elm Street. Could the selectmen just say what the comparable towns are that you add in your list?
I can look it up for you.
Yeah, could you have it here?
Yeah. And one thing I want to make clear as a distinction here, guys. We voted this study in the special town meeting. What we're doing today are the cost of living adjustments. We're not voting on the change of the study. The study was done... When was our special? September? When did we do it? Last year. December, sorry. So, what we're doing now is just implementing what we voted on in December, okay? So that, which is your annual cost of living, minor tweaks to your personal time, and to your... What was the other one? And bereavement. Those are the big three. So, I know we're getting into the weeds here on salaries, but the salaries were approved by the town at the special town meeting in December, okay? But it just... I will go over, even though we have the list here, I can get it. Again, but again, this is going back to last December, so I don't want to talk about stuff that's already happened, but we can do it. It's Akushnit, Avon, Berkeley, Carver, Dayton, East Bridgewater, Freetown, Hanson, Holbrook, Kingston, Lakeville, Mattapoisett, Millis, Plainville, Rochester, West Bridgewater, and Whitman. So, those are the comparables that this state agency used again last year in December. So, again, I want to distinguish between the two. Tonight, we're talking about cost of living, bereavement, and personal day. That's what's on the table tonight, not what we already voted on in December.
Okay, thank you, sir. Yes, please.
The microphone's coming.
Hi, Alicia Bernard, 54 Cedar Lane. I'm noticing here that there are more than just cost of living adjustments. I heard you guys throw up 4%, but what's the justification for the salaries from the financial committee recommended for fiscal year '25 in excess of that amount? I mean, I'm seeing things in here that were like 10%.
Are you asking for this... She mentioned FinCom. You want me to handle that?
I'm asking for both. You guys are saying these are just cost of living adjustments, but I don't think anybody in this room got a cost of living adjustment in excess of 5%. So, why are we recommending that for the town employees?
So, this article... No, it's a good question. This article is not dealing with that. This article is just for the cost of living increase that we already essentially agreed to, the salaries we already set, you know, back in December. So, this is more, I don't want to call it a perfunctory, but this is more, we've set the guidelines, and now we're just following them, if that makes sense.
Candace. Candace, could you bring the microphone up to the front here? Up to the front.
Raise your hand high, guys, so she can see it. There you go.
Thank you.
Hi, Jean Galant, Cranberry Drive. Just... So, we had a wage and personnel board, and then that was dissolved, and now I'm seeing that it's not the board of selectmen and the finance committee, it's just the personnel board. Can somebody explain that? Like, is there a personnel board now, and who's on that board?
I'll attempt to find out for you.
It's, I believe, our personnel board is still the board of selectmen and the finance committee. Yeah, it's just been, we gave it a cool name, Personnel Board, but it's still wage and personnel. It still serves the same function.
Candace.
Same folks.
Candace, this lady up on the bleachers, please. Raise your hand. Thank you. See her up there.
Did you mention that some of the increases...
Your name and...
Oh, sorry. Just used to talking to them. Sarah Nope, Lincoln Street. Did you mention that some of the increases were due to an additional day, like you were adding a day to the schedule, or like going from three to four days or anything? I thought you mentioned that, so I wasn't sure if that was the increase for salary.
We're just adding an extra personal day. We found in many of the communities in our area that three personal days was kind of the going rate, so we just wanted to be in the ballpark of what our surrounding area was.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, right here, please.
Adrian McDougall, 32 Hillside Ave.
Yeah, the talk was close.
Just a question. These, this 2% increase, that's, is that, that's different than the increases that we see on the budget? So, like, like for the town clerk, that's like a separate thing?
Correct.
Okay, just make...
Yes. Please identify your name and address, please.
Fabregana, Pembroke Way. Just a clarification.
Sure.
Make sure I understand it, and if I understand it, maybe... In December, we voted to give raises due to the classification.
Correct.
So, somebody raised, became $100,000, and that was the salary retroactive to last July 1st. We are now starting a new fiscal year, so you are asking the residents to vote a 2% increase on that $100,000... I'm just throwing a number out there. On that $100,000 that they were given in December.
I believe that is correct.
Am I saying that correct?
Yeah.
So, whatever we voted, that has become their salary.
Yes.
And now we're going to give them 2% on top of that as a cost of living. That is what we're voting on tonight.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nick, if you could, please...
Raise your hand high there.
Yep.
Hi, Karen Fieva, 66 Clido Bosworth. I'd like to know why the Attachment A, which is very complex, a lot of pages here, a lot to read, and we're not getting it until town meeting tonight.
It's a good question. It has been, it has been available on the website, Karen, for folks to peruse, so our Chapter 35 is always available online. So, the information is there, it's just we didn't, we didn't have a chance to, we wouldn't mail it out to you guys, you know? You know, we had it here for you guys at the town meeting, but the information is available online. I... I can't hear it. Nick, can you get her the microphone one more time?
In the future, can you put it in the warrant so we can digest it, read it, and understand it? Because it's a little hard when you get to town meeting and you only have five or 10 minutes before you're voting on something that you've never read.
Sure. No, that's a good point.
Okay, seeing no indication of further discussion, I'll ask...
Hold on. Do we have one?
I'm sorry, where? Raise your hand. Was there someone? Nick, if you could, please.
Jared Smaller, 34 Lawrence Road. I want to look at this from a different angle. I'm not going to focus on the number. Let's focus on our quality of services in this town. I think it's no surprise to anybody here that we hemorrhage employees because our town is not paid enough. We lose quality people.
Sir, the article in front of us, if we could stay on topic, is in regards to what's in front of us on Article 2.
This is, give me a second. So, by this 2%, it aligns with other communities our side, as we've been told, which is going to allow us to keep quality employees as well as hire quality employees in the future. It's going to make our community more appealing to people.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I'm going to ask for the finance committee's recommendation. It's on. See the green, yeah, green light?
Finance committee recommends?
Okay, finance committee recommends the board of selectmen?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay, I don't know if I made mention of it beginning, but all the articles tonight are by majority vote. So, all those in favor of Article 2, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. I can't call it. We're going to have to... I'm sorry. All right, it's too close for me to call, just looking at the green and red cards.
Mr. Moderator, can I make a point of order here, or point of interest here?
Sure.
Just a reminder to folks that these are our wage and personnel folks. They are our only non-union group here in the town of Halifax. All other employees for the town are union members, so those are negotiations done in union talks. So, I just want to make sure this is something we want to do here, where if we, if we don't go through with this, and there's, I'm not trying to dangle anything here, but there's nothing preventing them from unionizing, and that would remove this process completely.
Please stop.
So, something to think about. These, this, this, this increase is on par with all of our other unions in town, so just a point for you guys to think about.
Okay, what I'm going to do is call for a standing count. Town clerk is, has it... Yes, sir. Why don't you come to the mic and present your...
Cadence, hold on, sir. Cadence.
Your name and address, please.
Jeff Aldger, 118 Brandeis Circle. And I have 38 years of experience in labor relations with the State Department of Correction, and I'd just like to point out something. It's always bothered me with the town. It was always Personnel, Wage and Personnel Board will always push, "Well, we've got to give the non-union employees the same percentage that the union employees. It's only fair." Well, you miss one point. The union workers pay the unions a dues, significant amount of money. So, when in effect, if you give an equal wage to the non-union workers, you're actually giving them more money. Take home.
Thank you, sir. All right, I'm going to ask the town clerk, have the counters all set? Okay, just to let everybody know what's happening. It's basically the same vote. It's going to be majority vote for it to pass. Instead of raising your red card or your green card, I'm going to ask you to stand. The counters will make a physical count, and depending on the number of yes votes or no votes, we'll determine whether or not the article passes. And depending on the number of yes votes or no votes, we'll determine whether or not the article passes. Candace, could you bring the?
Richard Holmes, 25, 13th F. Who exactly is the non-union workers in the town of Halifax that we're giving the 2% raise to?
See if I can find any answer.
The, the positions.
So, so the. So Rich, if you want to look in here, all the positions are listed in this packet for you to peruse.
I looked real.
If you guys want to flip through, it's 35 dash 22.1. Grades is the title, and those are all the positions there.
Yes, ma'am, your, your name, address?
Deborah Pasquale, 9 Ocean F. I beg your pardon, but the counters seem to be all employees that are going to be affected by this vote. They're town workers.
We need four volunteers to count.
Okay, please, here's how we're going to do it, same as I, as, as before. Instead of raising your card, I'm going to, Article 2, if you're in favor of Article 2, please stand and remain standing until the count is complete. Thank you. Okay, please be seated.
No.
I'm sorry.
No.
I thought we were done, thought we had the numbers. Oh, please remain standing. All those in favor of Article 2, please stand. Okay, thank you. All those against, not in favor of Article 2, please stand. Okay, you can, uh, sit down, please. All right, the totals are in. On, uh, Article Number 2, there was 88 in favor, 118 against. The mo, the article is defeated. I'm going to ask everybody, please, please refrain from clapping and just a courtesy for everything. We'll get this thing hopefully moving. Okay. All right, we'll, uh, move on to Article 3. Proposed by the Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to set the salaries of several elected town officials for July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2025, as printed in the warrant.
Okay, thank you, Finance Committee Recommendation.
Uh, Finance Committee recommends, and I'd like to give an explanation as well.
Sure. Let me just get the, uh, Selectmen's, Selectmen's Recommendation on Article, uh, 3.
The Selectmen, uh, aren't agreed with, yes. Recommend.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir, if you could, uh, address that.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So for the full-time positions, the salaries reflected and increased consistent with the town's compensation schedule for non-union employees. This calls for a 2% coiler and a step increase of 2.8%. The town's clerk salary is increasing at a different rate as the position was incorrectly graded during the special town meeting last year. And this would accurately put the position within the town's compensation schedule.
Okay, thank you, uh. Do I have any discussion? Yes, ma'am, why don't you come up to this mic? Yes, right here. Your name and address, please.
Adrian McDougall, 32 Hillside F. About the town clerk, although we, we all love our town clerk. Can we, can you explain to us why there's a $20,000 increase from two years ago? It seems like an awful lot. I have two, two-part question, though. Do you want me to ask the second part?
Oh, let me get the answer to the first one and then I'll give you time to answer the second.
Yeah, sure. She, so, so that increase was to that position now being a full-time position. That used to be a part-time position, uh, and the duties of town clerks these days are getting more and more, uh, with the different elections. So that position went to a full-time position, so that explains the increase in pay for that position.
Okay, and your second, Phil?
Well, just a follow-up to that, can you specify the difference in the hours?
Excuse, one more time, Adrian.
Just the hour, the change in her hours.
Uh, what did we, what was the? It was from 32 to 40.
Okay, and, um, the other question I have related to that is, um, I'm just looking at the descrip, job description. And, um, who is handling the public records requests and filings? That's described in the town clerk's, um, job description.
I believe it's the town clerk. So, so our town administrator is the records officer, uh, the records collaborator, but he also collaborates with the town clerk as well. Town administrator, close in hand with the town clerk.
Yes, sir. I'll just come up. We got you.
Steve McFawn, 47, Indian Path Road. I just want to make sure I understood the, uh, answer correctly. So, um, Barbara Gaynor was not full-time. So we are now moving to a full-time position and that's why the salary increase. Do you want me to try and understand?
Mr. Sealy?
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think Barbara was. What's that? Yeah, uh, our former town clerk was 32. So now to, now to 40. So that is the case.
The change to 40 did occur at last town meeting for the current fiscal year.
I don't know if you heard that, the change to 40 happened at the last town meeting.
Nick, Mrs. Graveney, with her hand up, please.
Karen Fieva, 66 Clyde O'Barrow. The way I read this Article 3, it looks like, um, the town clerk is getting a 6.17% increase, uh, this year. Um, and the treasure collector is getting a 4.86% increase. And the highway surveyor is getting a 4.98% increase. Can you explain that?
Do you want to explain the, just explain the increases? That's based on the, the, um, classification compensation study we did that compared ours to other communities, similar communities.
Nick, if you could, yeah, she has a follow-up question.
That was in 23, 24, not 24, 25. We're talking about 24, 25.
So the, uh, larger increase to the town clerk's salary is reflective of, uh, when we initially graded the position, it was incorrectly graded, so it's being bumped to an additional grade, which is the, the reason for that additional increase. So we graded it initially as a, a nine. That was an error, it should be a grade 10. So this would put it on the scale of grade 10. So that's why it has a larger increase than the other positions.
Okay, I'd like to hold the town clerk, the treasure collector, and the highway surveyor.
Any other, uh, comments or questions? Okay, seeing, uh, no indication of, uh, further discussion?
A point of, point of order, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
So the previous speaker said she wanted to hold the town clerk, is that right? That salary line? But, um, so we've already discussed it. Is she making a motion to change it or what? I mean, we can't, are we going to vote on this number or not? I don't know what her hold is. So we already discussed it.
Nick, can you?
I can make a motion to, um, hold the town clerk, the treasure collector, and the highway surveyor. And if you want, I can just say that the motion will be for a 2% increase. Not what's printed in the, in the warrant.
Again, another point of order, uh, order, Mr. Moderator, if she's making a motion just to hold it or is she changing the number?
I'll just, I thought I had to make a motion to hold it before we could vote on the other. So if I don't have to do that, I will make a motion to change the town clerk to a 2% increase, the treasure collector to a 2% increase, and the highway surveyor to a 2% increase. Cost of living.
Please.
Well, again, another point of order, Mr. Moderator, and I'm not trying to make this any harder than we have to, but we, 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 we have to vote on a number. So she, we need the previous speaker to, in her motion, to say what the number is she wants in that line item. Then that would be an amendment. We would vote on the amendment, either up or down, and then we go on to the rest of the article, in, in my view.
Mrs. Graveney, do you have a number? I'm, I'm sorry, Mrs. Vero, my, my mistake. Sorry.
Town clerk, 2% is $1,447.80.
What's that make the total, please?
That was the total I gave you. That's a 2% increase. Okay, so you want me to add the two numbers together for you?
It's 73, 8, 3, 7.
73.
Thank you.
73, 8, 3, 7.
So again, a point of order, is that the previous speaker's motion that this number be, uh, and she's making an amendment to this number that instead of 76, 857, that it's 73, 837?
Mrs. Sealy? That's the correct number?
So we would need to vote on whether or not to amend it and then go on to the rest of it.
The, uh, motion on the floor to amend, uh, the town clerk's salary of Article 3. I need a show of hands, all those in favor of the amendment, changing the number from 76, 857 to 73, 837. Uh, all those in favor? Uh, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. It's that close, we're going to have to do a standing count, sorry. Should we have the counters back, please? Okay.
Can we do all three at the same time? I have the numbers. Instead of doing it separate, can't we do all three at one time? I have the numbers for you. I amend the motion.
All right, just for clarification purposes. Mrs. Faver?
Yes.
Just, if you could, please, before we vote, I'd like to clarify your motion, if you could, please.
Sure. I would like to amend Article Three to show the town clerk gets a 2% increase, the treasure collector gets a 2% increase, and the highway surveyor gets a 2% increase. And the numbers, the total number to amend for 2425 for the town clerk would be 7383780. For the treasure collector, it would be 7900920. And for the highway surveyor, it would be 8250168.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a point of clarification?
Yes, your name and address, please.
I'm sorry, Lori Costa Klein, 285 South Street. On the town clerk dollar value of 2% that was just stated, is that 2% figure based on the 2324 number of 72,390, which was the wrong wage? Or is that the correct wage rate? Did I understand that last year, the 2324 was the wrong wage rate, and this year's increase was an increase to the correct wage rate and the percent increase on top of that? So this 73,837.80 is on the incorrect wage rate, which we need to correct first before we can figure out what 2% is. Am I correct? Thank you.
Well, the way I understand it correctly from wrong, we specifically asked if it's going to be amended to a certain number, not just the 2% of whatever 2% is.
Again, as a point of order, I think the motion that's on the floor, or the motion is to amend the figures to a certain number. How the mover, the person making that motion got to those numbers is up to her to explain if she likes, or for us to question, or to debate on whether or not that's an accurate number. But the actual motion that we have to deal with now is whether or not to amend those three lines as was suggested by the previous speaker. But that's what we're actually voting on, are the numbers that she gave us. That's why I was trying to be real clear about that, so we all know.
Okay, then, so there is a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? There's a motion and a second to amend Article Three for the salaries listed for the town clerk, treasurer collector, and highway surveyor. So all those in favor of amending those figures, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. The motion to amend passes. Okay, now, Mrs. Faver, if you could come to the mic?
Yes.
And could you now make a motion on the specific numbers that you want to amend? First one being the town clerk?
I just did that. I'll give them to you again, though. I have the numbers right in front of me.
Hold on one second, please.
Again, a point of order, so we have voted to amend those three figures. So those amended figures are now the figures that we would vote on, on Article Three, so technically, the next motion ought to be, do we vote Article Three with the amendments?
Correct.
In other words, all the other stuff hasn't changed, but those three have.
We should do that first.
And now we have those three numbers on, as well as the other numbers, so we can vote this article as it has been amended.
Okay, sorry, Mrs. Faver.
That's perfectly fine. Thank you.
All right, so now, yes, ma'am. Yes, come right up here, thanks.
Adrian McDougal, 32, Hillside Ave. I just want to remind everyone, we just voted down the 2% increase for all the non-union workers. That's all I want to say.
You had a question? Your name and address, please.
Lauren Brower, 10 Thompson Street. And I just wanted to ask what the justification, what the justification was for such a high increase to be the initial thought in the first place when our average town clerk in the state of Massachusetts makes $56,000 a year?
Thank you.
As I just looked up on government salaries.
Mr. Moderator?
Oh, and one more question. How are we judging performance? Like, what is our OBM? What, how are we deciding if they're doing a good job? Like, what is the checks and balances?
I'll try to find any answer for that for you.
So, Mr. Moderator, to the first question, this, that, I do not have the actual figure, but that data is skewed because you have a lot of smaller communities in western Massachusetts that do not work full-time. This is based on the compensation and classification study that was completed using our comparable communities, comparing it to like communities with similar budgets, and these are the figures that they gave us, a third party. As for the second question, these are elected positions, so they are accountable to you guys, the voters. We, you know, we do not, the board of selectmen do not have the authority for evaluations. That would be for appointed employees, but they are to you, so you determine what their performance is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, and so if I understand it correctly, we have to vote on the, on Article Three on those categories that were not amended?
On all categories. The whole Article Three is now as, so the motion should be to vote, to approve Article Three, I'm sorry, the motion should be, to approve Article Three as amended. So Article Three has had three sort of subamendments to it, but those are now the numbers that are, were just voted on by a town meeting, so that's, that should be the motion. Somebody should make that motion.
Mrs. Faver, did you make that motion?
I made the motion. Article Three as amended, as voted. It's already been moved, so let's vote.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded?
Correct.
So, all those in favor?
Do you want me to give an explanation? Does anyone need an explanation? The explanation is, is that everyone's hurting. All your pocketbooks are hurting, your financial budget is hurting. A 2% increase is sufficient.
Mr. Moderator, Finance Committee's recommendation on the amended motion?
Finance Committee's recommendation on the amended?
Finance Committee does not recommend the revised Article Three.
Yes, sir. Board of Selectmen, your recommendation?
We haven't really taken it up as a board, so we don't have a recommendation. We did recommend the original one proposed by the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Mrs. Nolan?
Yes, Sandra Nolan, Town Accountant. I have a question as to this vote. So if the amended amounts are not voted, if they're voted down, what happens then? Do we go back to the original amounts in the article, or does the article just not pass at all?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
My impression is that the last vote, we had amended, a motion to amend this article. That vote's already been taken, so the article itself has been amended. If this article is now voted down, then nobody gets paid. Right? They don't have a salary. So the numbers are lower because of the last vote, but now the numbers on the floor is what we have here, and if it's voted down, I believe that we would have basically those positions without a salary.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, Gordon Andrews, 244 Elm Street. If the motion fails, I'm sure somebody would move to reconsider the article with new numbers so that the people would get paid. This motion is to set these salaries. If it doesn't, if it fails, then somebody else can make a motion to reconsider new numbers. If it fails, if they don't get the 2%, somebody come back, motion to reconsider with level funding. It's not that they're not going to get paid.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, Lauren Brower, 10 Thompson Street. If we were to vote to vote it down, then their salary would stay the same, right? So we would just vote on their new, the salary they already have, we could vote off, keep that?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
The article specifically says to set the salaries for elective town offices, and you can ignore everything from on the left-hand side of that, where it says 2021, 2022, 2023. All we're really dealing with is the 2024, 2025 numbers. So if, if this motion fails now, the amended motion, then none of those items are funded or approved, or approved for salary, I should say, the funding comes in a different part, but none of those people would get paid.
But we could then vote for new numbers, correct?
I didn't hear, I'm sorry.
So then we could vote for new numbers, correct?
Well, you could amend it again, I suppose. Could make another amendment. You'd have to vote on that.
You'd have to have a motion to reconsider, and then another motion to amend the article, again, with the new numbers.
Okay.
To amend the article as amended already?
Right.
Okay.
And a motion to reconsider, by the way, is, has in past practice always taken place, not before another article has been debated. That's been our past practice for 30, almost 40 years that I'm aware of.
Yes, sir.
Coordinators, it wouldn't be a motion to reconsider, it'd be a new motion. So after the reconsideration takes place, then it would just be a motion. Wouldn't be a motion to amend, it would be a new motion. You have to do the reconsideration first.
If it didn't pass? Okay, little clarification. What we're going to do now is vote on Article Three as it appears in the warrant, as amended. Okay, with the numbers, so we're all clear. There's a motion on the floor in a second to vote and pass on Article Three as amended. All those in favor of Article Three as amended, please raise your green card. Thank you. All those opposed to Article Three as amended, raise your red card. The amended article passes. All right, move on to Article Four. Moving on to Article Four. Todd, would you like to make a motion on Article Four, the operating budget?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion to, the town approved Article Number Four as printed in the warrant, and inclusive of the revised Articles Two and Three.
Okay, do I have a second? There's a motion on the floor, do I have a second? There's a motion and a second. Okay, the Board of Selectmen's recommendation on Article Four?
Article Four, we, we would, we do recommend it, but I think we're going to go down by category?
Yes. Oh, it's the whole operating budget. You're right, I forgot to do that.
Do you have a?
Okay, we're going to discuss the Article Four operating budget. We're going to go by sections, and I'm going to do each of the main sections, follow them out. If there's a hold, please raise your hand and say, "Hold," and we'll go back and discuss that. Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, because of what happened with Article Two and Article Three, don't we have to know the numbers that need to be adjusted? Shouldn't that come from the Finance Committee?
I asked that same question, I'll, I'll get an answer for you, Mr. Dodd.
We can absolutely adjust the elected figures, but we are not able to go through and make that adjustment right now. There's several line items, and it's not just a 2% reduction, there's other factors. Some of those line items include union, some include non-union. Union employees will still get their 2% because that is a contracted wage, as long as the as long as the, the amounts are approved here today. So what we would do is approve the amounts, and then that would go to surplus revenue at the end of the year and end up being free cash. Because we can't just calculate, you know, you're talking several line items that we'd have to go and do in-depth calculations.
But if I understand it correctly, from my own understanding, it's because the amended numbers were less than what was proposed, so the money is there to cover it, I guess is. Just to make sure that we have the money there to do it. Yes, sir.
So the money's still going to be taxed then, correct? If we don't amend the article, then the money's still going to be taxed to the taxpayers. So can we get the numbers? Do we have a computer here?
We, we cannot calculate those numbers. This was a budget by the Finance Committee, they recommended this budget. We, there's no way for us to go through and redo 50 line items at this point. There's several factors that go into those line items. They're not just a wage across the board, there's longevity, there's clothing allowances, so we can't just reduce 2%. Each line item has to be individually looked at to see what part of that line item can be reduced. And I'm not comfortable doing that calculation right now, as we want to provide an accurate number.
Okay, then, yes, sir.
Isn't there a way to amend this article so that we are not taxed on money that we have already cut from the budget?
I'll try to find out.
I don't think that it's necessary to have the specific figures, but it seems to me that since we have a lawyer in the room, that a couple of sentences at the end would do the trick.
I'll see what I can find out. Mr. Hatta, please.
The one additional point as well is that if we do not progress forward with the votes as printed and to hold another secondary special town meeting, would certainly come at a cost as well, which may be more than the $7,500 that we're saving through the amendment in Article Number Three. So those are just some points, we want to just make sure everyone understands the aggregate impact to the town citizens, which, you know, we believe is not going to be significant. Our recommendation collectively is that, you know, we vote as printed. In the end, so we fund the positions, there will be in excess of $7,500 plus the additional impact that was voted as Article Two, and we would recommend to use that, you know, to continue to, you know, fund the town, which, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of needs in servicing you all citizens, us citizens, sitting here at this table. So, thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, thank you, sir. Yes, Mrs. Tinkum.
Deborah Tinkum, 88 Paradise Lane. What's really troubling me, and I think a lot of the folks behind me is, if I get any closer. What we're upset about is the tax rate in town. And we come to town meeting, and we get the warrant, and these numbers are crazy. And I, the salary should not include the clothing allowance. Why is that part of the salary? And you've worked a lot of hours on it, so you don't want to change anything. But my tax rate's going to go up again, and we can't drink the water from our tap in most parts of the town, and nobody's doing anything. Why can't we postpone this meeting to another week? So everybody can look at the numbers, and we can come together and work on something. But right now, it's, it's like it's being shoved down our throat, and I think we're tired and we're not going to take it anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Tinkum. Alright, what we're going to do now then is go through the line items on the, on the budget. And I'm going to read, starting, which would be starting on page 10.
Jeff Bolger, Brandeis Circle. I fully understand you can't come up with the exact numbers tonight without canceling the meeting or holding it for hours on end. But I still haven't heard an answer as to why we can't have some written line item added to that that would exclude the money we have already voted out. I haven't got an answer to that.
Let me see if I get your answer.
Yeah, we would have to recalculate every single line. The requirement is you have to vote a budget, a figure. We can't vote hypothetically, so you have to vote a physical number, an actual figure.
Okay, thank you, sir. Alright, let's move on. Let's get on to Article, Article IV. We're going to start on page 10. Yes, ma'am.
Adrian McDougall, 32 Hillside Ave. In relation to that, at the end, when we go through all the line items in the budget, can, are we able to do a motion to decide what happens with that money? Maybe we want to allocate it to Public Works, to the Water Department per se, or the Roads? Can we reallocate that if we choose to make a motion?
You can make a motion to amend the article. And in that motion, you could choose to reduce one line item and increase another line item. But you'd have to be specific in those figures in the same motion, reducing it by one amount and increasing another line item by another amount.
Okay, that's still pretty difficult.
Yes, sir. Nick, if you could, please.
Thank you. Jared Smaller, 34 Lawrence Road. I'd like to amend Article IV to read that as it is, plus any surplus related to Article Two and Three be moved to free cash.
That, that would automatically occur. So anytime we have surplus revenue at the end of the year, that surplus revenue is certified by the Department of Revenue, and it becomes free cash. So it's not something we can just do. It just, whatever surplus revenue we have ends up becoming free cash as certified by the state. So it would automatically close out. So, you know, for instance, if you have a line item that's budgeted at $50,000, and you only spend $40,000 of that, that $10,000 ends up being surplus, and that ends up at the end of the fiscal year closing out to free cash, automatically as certified by the state. You don't, we don't have to, it's not something that we vote per se. The surplus revenue closes out to free cash automatically. So in this case, if you approve the budget as printed in the warrant, and it would be the changes that were not voted in Article Two would end up being surplus revenue that next fiscal year would close out to free cash.
Yes, sir. Oh.
Hold on.
Hold, hold on, Nick.
Hold on, so we can hear your question.
So if we don't make any changes, then basically the amount of money we did not approve for salary still gets taken out of our pocket anyways, it just goes to free cash versus salary?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
If you vote the numbers that are in Article IV, those numbers will be part of your tax, they'll be taxed one way or another. The only way around it is to change the numbers in Article IV. What we've been trying to express though is that, and just like with the previous article that we had in Article III, we can't vote on hypothetical numbers. We have to have hard numbers before town meeting. In other words, everybody here wants to know what they're voting on. Are they going to vote $200 for the moderator's salary? Or are they going to vote $150? We just have to know that. So if you want to do what I hear everyone saying, the really only way to do that is to, is to change these numbers. Now, what, what this table's up here is trying to express is if we were to do it based on the Article Two and Article Three 2% changes and so on like that, we can't give you those numbers right now. It's going to take some calculations to get to that point. That's all we're saying. But it's certainly up to town meeting to vote any number they want to vote on any of these line items. It's entirely up to you, just like we did with Article III. You move to amend it to whatever number. Only thing, we just can't tell you right now what those numbers would be simply because of the complexity of it, that's all.
Ms. Troop, would you like to say something?
Yes, Amy Troop, 10 Hillside Ave. I would like to say that that is the exact reason why Mr. Bolger is asking for the amendment to be there so that the town does not get taxed for that amount of money. Am I correct, Mr. Bolger? So basically what we're trying to say is, Karen Faver just made those numbers come up. You guys could sit there and put them in the Excel spreadsheet and tell us, because otherwise, we're going to be taxed on the amount that's at the bottom, regardless of if we held things or not. And what we're telling you is that our balanced budgets at home cannot reflect the tax raises anymore. So you're basically tipping the waiter, and this is what we're saying. So we do need those numbers to be corrected so that we're not taxed on them.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator, I, I think we just explained that you won't be taxed on numbers you vote. In other words, the money that you vote in Article IV, if you reduce those numbers, that you won't be taxed on them. We won't, the government won't collect that money from you. But that's the only way you can do that is by giving us a number on each of these line items that you want to change, just like we did with Article III a few minutes ago. The town can't vote on a hypothetical, okay, 2% reduction. We need to know what that number is going to be. That's, that, and that's for everyone's benefit. We all want to know what number you're voting.
Mr. Moderator, is somebody in the Finance Committee?
Yes. I'm sorry.
So I think, I guess my question is, I understand that the numbers have to be correct in the budget, but obviously, it's gonna be difficult for us to get there tonight, given the fact that there's, given the fact that there's a lot of changes, there's going to be difficult for us to get there tonight. So I think what I'm hearing from a couple of the residents, the question is, can the budget be voted with, as is written, with some type of an addendum written at the bottom that just acknowledges that it will be less whatever was voted down in Articles Two and Three? And then the numbers get worked out after this meeting, but there's acknowledgement on the Article Four vote that says it is being reduced by those numbers?
I don't think so.
I spoke with council, and council has advised we have to vote a budget figure. We can't vote, you know, a hypothetical of minus this article or minus this percentage. There has to be a figure that has to be voted for a budget.
Does that clarify? Yes, sir. Your name and address, please.
Don McNeil, 1113 Ave. Guys, there's 150 line items. Let's cut to the chase. Let's go one by one, write down a number. It'll be quick. We'll be here till midnight debating all this stuff. Let's go down. Let's start now, one by one. Let's get it done. It's the only way it's gonna happen. If everything has to be written, we can do it line by line.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. In the white.
Michael Martin, 56 Eldana Road. So what has to happen is exactly what the previous gentleman just said. We have to have a number. So it is not, the Finance Committee has given their recommendation. If you have a certain item you want changed, you have to have the specific number you wanted at to set it to amend it. It is not the Finance Committee's or the Board of Selectmen's job to change it now on the spot. It is your job as the resident wanting to amend it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Andrews.
If we adjourn the meeting till tomorrow night, will the Finance Committee and the Town Council have those numbers for us?
Mr. Moderator, Mr. Moderator, really quick.
Yes, sir.
Just to remind folks, our Finance Committee spent about five months putting this budget together, right? So to have, I don't want to say we're dismissing their work here, but to have them change everything on the fly after five months of meeting with department heads, after looking, poring through budgets, I think is unrealistic. I like what the gentleman said here. If there's an item on the budget that you have an issue with, put a hold on it. Otherwise, we're gonna be here for a long, long time. But to dismiss five months of work on this budget just because we want it, it seems, I hear ya, I hear ya. But I would just make that point.
Yes.
Barbara Gay in the Pembroke Way. Just a point of information. When, for Article Three, you came up with the $7,500 thing, amount, I'm sorry. So is there a guesstimate? I know we can't hold you to, we're not asking you to hold it to, but about, is there an estimate as to how much money, by not allowing Article Two, the raises, you would have to be taking off of the overall operating budget?
Mr. Moderator, I think Mr. Darji was explaining that a few minutes ago.
I didn't hear, I didn't hear the whole number for the rest of the operating budget, only Article Three.
Well, so there's two pieces, yes. So Article Three is straightforward. There's three elected positions that were voted to be amended that, you know, just in quick math, that's about $7,500, which again is completely immaterial to the town residents, including ourselves. And then the second piece, which is much more complicated, is the Article Two, which will involve having to go through each of the line items to see exactly what the effect is, and that's gonna take quite a bit of time to put together. The Town Administrator would have that information. I don't know if he has a rough ballpark number that he can kind of throw out there, but I think in the end, you know, the overall impact to the $29 million budget proposed is going to be immaterial at the end of the day, but.
Which is up to the residents to decide if it is immaterial.
Correct.
I'm just asking for some sort of number, because there's so much out there, it just will give us something that we're working with. Right now, we're not working with anything but wrong numbers.
Yeah, no, exactly. Totally understand. And so, and I didn't mean to diminish, you know, the folks' wishes here. Certainly, you know, we know we're in a high inflationary, you know, market, you know, costs are going through the roof, people are having, especially folks that, you know, live on a fixed income, which is inclusive of some members of this committee as well. You know, times are hard, right? So we understand that. We haven't even got to the whole school situation, which is a whole nother animal, which the costs are exploding in that front. And so we're going to have some real challenges in this town, not just this year, but even more so next year. So just something to keep in mind and be, you know, thoughtful of, I guess, as we move forward here. But, you know, to the budget itself is what I meant, as far as, you know, being immaterial is not gonna move the dial in a significant manner. I don't think that's going to, you know, change your lifestyle or anything of that matter as residents. So just wanted to make that point.
Plus, there are several other money articles that we have to vote on. So the fact that this is too much, just a, just an idea. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator over there.
All right.
Mr. Moderator, over here.
Yes, sir. Nick, if you could, please.
Gordon Laws, 33 Highland Circle. Look, this is on my own calculator, so the Town Administrator, somebody could disagree with me, but Mrs. Gaynor, if you're looking for a ballpark, if I am correct, about 30 positions have been affected by the votes here tonight. If we were to say that the average salary of those positions is $75,000, which I think is a high number, that would come to about $2.25 million. If we were to say that the town had voted down a total of, say, as high as 6% and increases, that would be $135,000 that the town voted down is kind of the ballpark that you're talking about, which would work out to residents, about $18 per resident.
Yes, ma'am. You want to come up to the mic, please? In your name and address, sir.
Hi, Jackie Canapino, 229 Hudson Street. Is there a way we can just vote to hold the lines that are amended?
Yes.
Just as a general, one vote, hold those lines and then approve the rest?
Yes, and I agree with that gentleman there. The only way we're gonna get through it is if we go by section to section. If there's a hold, raise your hand, yellow, hold, and we'll try to wade our way through it.
Right. I mostly was saying if we could do one vote to just hold those, all those lines that we've already discussed, or no.
Well, actually, if I understand correctly, just the opposite. If there's a hold on those lines, we can vote those lines that are not being held and then go back and do the hold.
Good.
Yes? And that way, at least, we can at least move forward a little bit. Yes, ma'am. Last one, and then we're gonna get going on the budget.
Just a quick comment to the Finance Committee, just re-prudent in case this sort of thing happens again. If we have a, something that we need to vote on that could affect the entire budget like this, maybe next year, if there's something like that, you could prepare for that, just so this, all this craziness doesn't happen. Same time.
Okay. Here's what I'm gonna attempt to do. We're gonna, we're gonna go by section. We're starting on page 10, by the way, in the warrant. Okay, the first category is general government. On page, starting on page 10 and going down through page 11, and, yeah, finishing on line 46. So we're gonna go from lines one to 46 under general government. If there's a hold, please stand, raise your hand. I'll call on you, and then we can put a hold on whatever line you'd like to do. Okay, let's start up. General government, lines on page 10 and 11, are lines one through 46. Five is an eight, so six. If, if there's a hold on any of them, please stand and say, "Hold."
So again, guys, if you have a hold for one through 46, raise your hand, any of those one through 46. The moderator will call on you, and you tell us what number you'd like to put a hold on. One through 46.
One through 46. Yes, ma'am, we'll start with you. Where's, what? Line three. Yes, ma'am. Standing, which line? Yes, we just did line three. Okay. Any other holds?
So line three has been held. If anybody's looking for line three, that has been held. There's another hold? Please raise your hand.
Line four. Hold. Who said that? Could you raise your hand? Who said line 22? Okay, thank you. Line 10, hold. Line 12, hold. I'm sorry? Line 28, hold. Line 17, assessment salary, hold. Any other holds on, on? I'm sorry? We already did 13. Clerical.
Mr. Moderator, somebody here in the front?
Oh, I'm sorry. Line 21, hold. Who said that? Could you raise your hand, please? Line 15? Yes, ma'am. What line? Line 16. Raise your hand, please. Line what? Line 32? Line 42? Anybody else that'll hold? I'm sorry? Raise your hand, please? Line? We already have line three. Oh, 43, sorry. 43, Tom Billings. We are going by lines. If you're going by lines, one through 46, if there's a hold on any of the lines, one through 46, raise your hand and we'll put a hold on it. I'm sorry? 18. 18. Line 20, assessors. Any other holds on lines one through 46? I'm sorry? Line 23?
26.
Thank you for speaking up.
Mr. Moderator, really quickly, just, these are the holds. Line one, line three, line four, line 10, line 12, line 13, line 15, line 16, line 17, line 18, line 20, line 21, line 26, line 28, line 32, line 35, line 42, and line 44.
Seeing that there's a hold on the majority of lines, one through 46, let's just go line by line. Nope, that's the way we'll do it.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moderator, hand in the corner over here.
Yes, sir.
Tom Pratt, Arrowhead Path. I'd just like to point out that this exact last 20 minutes could have been avoided if we listened to Selectman Bruno from last year's Minute Recap, when he suggested after the fact that Selectmen's meeting on May 23rd, that we in fact go line by line during Article Four. That was his recap at the next Selectmen's meeting. We could have saved 20 minutes.
We're gonna go line by line, try to get through this. Okay, line number one, moderator's salary. Any questions? Okay, we got a hold. I can't hear you. I move it to a dollar, just like the tree would. Thank you for your input. Okay, any, any other discussion? Have someone, attempt to chain them up?
Mr. Moderator, we got a point of order. He said, the last speaker said he moved to make it a dollar. Is that an amendment? And if it's so, is there a second? We have to vote on the amendment first, and then on, if that passes down, the amended article, or amended number.
I just had to double check with Town Council. Because it's the moderator's salary, I can't be moderator and moderate that specific line. So the Town Clerk's gonna step in and do the line one moderator's salary.
Could the previous speaker, please, tell me again what that amendment was for the moderator's salary? From 200 to 1, is that the motion? Do I have a second? All those in favor of the amendment? Oh, go right ahead, I'm the moderator. Name and address, please.
Kevin Rogers, 25 Ninth Avenue. My mom is here from Georgia.
Yes.
And I wanted to have her come, because she wanted to see what town government and how we handle things for voting and such.
Okay.
And this whole night has been a nightmare for me to demonstrate to her how it's supposed to run for voting as a person.
I'm sorry about that, but we're gonna stick to the topic.
Yeah, well, that, well, the motion is ridiculous on its face. I mean, the moderator has a very hard job, and to say that they don't deserve the money that they get paid is ridiculous.
Okay.
The amount is the same as last year, and there's a bunch of other ones that we're running on that are the same, and it's ridiculous that people are saying that we should not have any, the same money as last year.
All right, thank you. All right, so we're gonna take a vote on that, an amendment from 200 to $1. For a yes vote, raise your green card. For a no vote, raise your red card. Motion fails. For a no vote, raise your red card, motion fails. Alright. Can I have a motion for art, for number one, line item one?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
This is the original salary.
This is the original one, you already voted on the amendment, right? Alright, and all those who vote no? Motion passes.
We're flying now. Okay, uh? Line number two, selectman's salary. Do I have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second on line item two, selectman's salary. Seeing no indication of further discussion, all those in favor of line two, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Line two passes. Line three was held, town administrator's salary. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So?
So moved.
So moved, in a second?
You have a hold on it. You have a hold on it. There's a hold on it.
We held line three. Are we gonna talk about it now, or are we going back to it later?
Yep, we'll do that, yes. If you wanna come up to the mic, or take the microphone, raise your hand, you wanna speak to this, there's a hold on it, I'm sorry, yes.
Thank you. Karen Fava, Clyde O'Bosworth Road, um, on the town administrator's salary, could you please explain the selectman, could you please explain to us, uh, the salary went from twenty-three, ninety-five, nine oh six, to twenty-four, one forty-three, nine fifty-four, and now at one sixty-six, six thirty. Um, I understand that there's been a contract signed by the selectman allowing, um, this position, nine months severance pay, um, twenty-five sick, uh, vacation days, uh, X amount of sick days. I mean, can you explain to us why you feel that the percentage of increase is warranted?
I'll try to get an answer.
So, Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Bruno?
The earlier numbers, twenty-two and twenty-three, if the town will recall, um, we didn't have a town administrator for over a year, or at least a year, so those numbers weren't expanded, these are expanded numbers, so the numbers for the town administrator's salary wouldn't have lived up to it, because we didn't have them. We had an interim one, we had resignation, and this is before this board was elected. Um, as far as the current salary, that's a contracted amount, we've contracted with the town administrator, uh, and that would be the amount of, uh, wages that would be expected for, for this, um, uh, position. The, um, the number is actually, in, in, in a study that was done... Oh, sorry, yeah, I'm just looking up something here. In a study that was done of comparable towns, the median salary for a not, for a, um, town administrator is a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. This number, uh, in this contract is, is less than that, although, grieve, it is substantial. The, um, hiring of a town administrator, uh, as it's becoming more and more difficult, um, and, you know, things have gone up, so that's what this, uh, that's what this wage is, is a contractual amount.
Yes sir. Your name and address, please.
Uh, Brendan Elliott, Arrowhead Path, um, just, the nice part about numbers is they're not negotiable, or they're up to opinion base, right? So, after doing a little bit of research while we were sitting here, uh, the average town administrator in Massachusetts makes forty-four dollars an hour, which at a forty-hour a week is ninety-one thousand. The highest in Massachusetts makes seventy-seven dollars and sixty-three cents per hour, which equates to a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars per year. So, um, over the last two years, it's been a seventy-four percent raise, so I do understand the, um, the difficulty in hiring somebody, and our town cannot run without a town administrator, so I do agree with that, and I think to keep pace with all of our other numbers, I'd like to make an amendment to change the salary to a hundred and forty-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars a year, which is a two percent raise off of twenty-twenty-four.
Could you give me the number again, please Brendan?
A hundred and forty-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three, and that would still keep us in the top seventy-five percent of town administrators in the state of Massachusetts. And I have the utmost faith that he's doing a good job and going to continue to do that, that's why I wanna keep a raise on the table, just not a seventy-five percent raise.
I think you made a motion, didn't you?
You made a motion.
And a second. So the new number is one, one forty-six, seven thirty-three, is that right?
One, I have one forty-six, eight thirty-three.
Mr. Moderator, could I speak to that, please?
Yes, certainly.
So, so in my time as selectman, I think I'm one of the few guys in the history of this town that has seen four town administrators. Um, and they've all ranged from different abilities. One of the reasons our salary was so low coming into this was because we had a guy here for a long time that gave us a huge pay cut. He was one of the lowest-paid town administrators in the state of Massachusetts. I have seen this town with town administrators that are out there, and I'll be honest, it's not pretty. It's not. So, as much as this was a hard decision, and as much as I knew this was coming, you guys put us here to try to make the best decisions we think, regardless of the hate we're gonna get, right? We have to make a tough call, that we look back and say, in three years, what is best for the town? And, and I know, I know this is a tough pill to swallow, but I, I've talked to folks, I've seen what the talent pool is out there for town administrators, and I have a very good feeling we're, we're heading right back to where we were, and I just, I couldn't stand to let the town go there, so that was, that was my reasoning for it, so I just wanted to let you guys know where my head was around that.
Yes sir, Mr. Brendan.
Sorry, I mean to keep stealing the mic, uh, I completely agree with him, also, being on the planning board, I've seen what happens when we don't have a town administrator, and that's why I think that the increase from ninety-five thousand, nine hundred and six dollars to a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars is a very modest and well-deserved pay raise for the individual that needs to do this. So that's why I'm saying we should keep that with a two percent raise to keep pace with the rest of the raises that we've dished out tonight. My question, though, from what I've interpreted, and I don't wanna put words in your mouth, as I highly respect you, if we do not vote this, is it an or else, where if we do not vote this in, we will no longer have the, the person in place? In other words, if we do not agree to this, are we in some way being held hostage to this salary, or if we do vote as a town to keep a seventy-five percent rate of, in the highest percentage of a town administrator, um, is that not good enough, and we would then lose this talent?
I'll be honest with you Brendan, I don't think that's a hypothetical answer.
Well, it is, it's, it's a question, because we're either going, what I interpreted that as, is it, we're either gonna vote this in, or we're gonna lose the talent.
Well, that's your own personal interpretation, right?
That's why I was asking for clarification.
I don't know how else I could get an answer for you.
Any selectman clear to address that?
Yeah, um, so, this is a contracted sta, uh, figure, right? So, uh, the first, um, possibility would be, uh, if there was a lower number there, that we would have to talk with the town administrator to see if we would, if he'd be able to adjust his contract and would agree to a different number. Um, otherwise, um, you know, it, it, essentially, it's a, a, a breach in a fashion, and, and he would be, uh, within his rights to decide that he'll go somewhere else. Now, I would say that, um, he had in hand a much more generous contract than this earlier this year, and, um, we, uh, we talked to him about that, and it was our, as, as Mr. Selig said, was our collective, uh, judgment, that as opposed to trying to, uh, go back into the pool, uh, and, and obtain a new, uh, town administrator, uh, that we should try to work with this one, who has done a good job for us, who understands the town now, and who, um, actually agreed to a, um, uh, a contract that was less incentive, uh, for him if, if he'd have left. So, in other words, this is really the market rate, um, and that's, the market rate is the market rate, we, we, we're, we know for a fact that, uh, again, as Mr. Selig said, we've had a year or two of disruption without, without a town administrator. Um, the pool of applicants that we have dealt with, uh, are far inferior to, uh, the town administrator that we have now, and, and like I said, he had other options, he had other, uh, towns calling him, saying, you know, come to us, we'll pay you more, and that's how we ended up at this number, so that's why it's there, it's not like, um, you know, it's, it, 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 we didn't arrive at this without some thought, and without a lot of, a lot of, uh, negotiation to get there, and again, it's the, that's the going rate, I mean, there's, that's just the way it is.
Just to dovetail that really quick, uh, I did talk with people whose jobs it is, is to find town administrators for other towns, and there are a lot of municipalities now that have town administrator openings, that are offering a lot more money than we are. The pool is very shallow, and if we were to bring in a new town administrator now, according to these folks, we'd be looking at a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty now, to try to get somebody in the door, that, I don't wanna say definitely, but would most likely not have the experience that we have here. So that's the tough decision that we had to make, again, we knew this was coming, but that's not what this is about, that's what keeping a good talented person here is, and what's best for Halifax in the next three years.
I, I don't discount the talent, or the future that he's gonna be a part of in the town of Halifax, which is why my amendment did include a raise, right? And I would just ask, um, out of the faith of, if, as a resident, and for the rest of the residents here that are paying that salary, um, that he takes that into consideration in the town of Halifax, and if he finds a better spot at another town that has more money to give him, then unfortunately, we're gonna have to lose the talent, but that's just how the world works. So, my, my motion is a hundred and forty-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three.
Candace, could you give the microphone to the lady in the pink, please?
Sarah Noble, fifty-five Lincoln Street, I just, with all due respect to your Googling skills, um, I also looked up the numbers, and there are several towns in Massachusetts, uh, that paid two hundred thousand dollars for the town administrator, so, um, I saw that, those same numbers on ZipRecruiter, but they're unfortunately not accurate, so just wanted to make sure that that was clear, that we are not paying more than every other town, um, in Massachusetts, it's well within the reasonable amount, and I think is well worth it, having worked with him, um, Lee, and I just wanted to make sure that those numbers were cleared up.
Yes Kevin? Your name? Kevin, could you state your name and address, please?
Kevin Rogers, twenty-five Ninth Ave. And what I wanted to say is, I agree with the amendment, I think that's a fair, uh, rate, and the, uh, the booklet, or the survey that y'all keep run, uh, at, referring to, is, um, the towns that you're talking about are towns that have a much bigger business environment to pull from. We don't have that much business, so the money that's going into the pot here is coming from the pockets of our town residents and the property taxes that we have to pay.
Alright, thank you. Candace, could you give the microphone? Thank you.
I just wanted to make a point, that our town administrator, similar to our police chief and our fire chief, is on duty seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day, he gets called all different times of day and night to make decisions for the town. The town administrator's job is not a forty-hour-a-week position, if you pay it like a forty-hour-a-week position, that's what you're gonna get, and that is not what Halifax needs.
Candace, the lady right behind you in green. Your name and address, please?
Yeah, Lori Costa Klein, two eighty-five South Street. Um, I would like to ask Mr. Elliott to rescind his motion, um, I think Mr. Selig made a compelling case for what the landscape looks like. I think as towns payers, I absolutely understand, um, the financial different difficulties, a tough economy, trying to make a dollar out of fifty cents, but at the bottom line, if we lose good talent, what does it cost us? We have a stable town government right now, an administrator with some experience that knows the town, we have three people sitting at the select board table, that are not having to recuse themselves constantly from votes, so that our government actually functions. Okay, we need to keep that train on the track, and I don't really have a strong feeling toward or against, um, our town administrator, he's very competent, from what I've observed, but the bottom line is, there isn't a whole lot else available, and the market gets what the market gets. So if you think that this is top dollar, what are we gonna have to, um, pay if we lose him? We will lose him, we have a revolving door in this town of training people and having them move on to other towns for more money. We need to think about this a little bit more sensibly, you get what you pay for, and I don't wanna go back to chaos, this whole meeting has been chaos, we don't want every day of our government to look like chaos, because we don't have competent people sitting at the table, thank you.
Nick, the, uh, lady in the green jacket, please, thank you.
I just had a question, Jen Carroll, five Rymon Lane, um, when you're running the comparisons for the numbers, for this amount of money, what is the population that the town administrator is running for those people? Cause right now ours is under ten thousand.
Mr. Moderator?
So we're gonna compare ourselves to Foxborough? Wellesley?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
Uh, so the comparable contract terms, Norfolk, Lancaster, Bolton, Foxborough, Carlisle, Stowe, uh, that's where the median comes in at one seventy-five. Uh, I will also point out, though, that in a lot of those contracts, there are other, um, uh, incentives, uh, that we are not offering. For example, the contract that, uh, would have been offered by another town, uh, included an automobile, a brand-new automobile, included contributions by the town to a 401K, uh, and some deferred compensation, and a match of that. So, those are things we're not offering in this contract, what we're offering in this contract's much less than that, and I think as, I think the previous speaker's point was, um, if we go back out into the market, we're likely gonna pay this amount anyway. Uh, so it's, it's really, um, if we, I, I, we don't see a benefit to, to losing what we have, uh, if it's gonna end up being, again, a period of time where we don't have a town administrator, and we end up paying the same amount of money anyway.
Thank you, yes, your name and address, please?
Jen Clark, three thirty-eight Elm. Just a quick question, you had mentioned several times the experience that he brings to the table, it may help us make a informed decision better, if you could elaborate on what that experience is?
Oh, I'm sorry, was, I, I, the question was, what are the credentials? Um, well? We have, um, I'm, I'm not sure what the question would really be, we have an educated person who's been in town for over a year or two, uh, we see the work he's done, um, so, you know, uh, hiring somebody new, uh, would be someone you don't know anything about.
Jared Smaller, thirty-four Lawrence Road, um, where this is a contracted position, I think that we run the risk of this costing us much more than what the salary increase would be, in a possible breach of contract, and a payout over remaining years of it, and any other things that go along with a breached contract. This is something that we have voted the select board in, into their positions, and with one exception, this coming election on Saturday, there is one contested election, or one contested race, so, two, excuse me, out of how many? We constantly run candidates unopposed, so we have voted the select board in to make this decision, and I agree with their decision, I think Cody is gonna be great for our town, and I hope that we can do things to make him stick around. He's a young town administrator who probably has great vision that we haven't seen here before, but we made this decision ourselves by voting the select board in, and they acted, and I agree with their decisions on the best interests of the town and their citizens.
Thank you, sir. Candace, right behind you.
Hi, Van Donnelly, 201 Cranberry Drive. Couple of questions. Number one is, if we, if he moves out of this contract, he doesn't like the price, so we owe this man a severance now, number one. And second of all, have we, you know, we don't know what he's going to deliver. So, the question I ask is, is pay per performance, right? It's like, can we give this guy just like a bonus-type incentive with a set of criteria that he's got to hit? Okay? In other words, he's in here, we're buying a pig and a poke. We don't know what we're going to get. Sounds like a good guy and all that, I get. But everybody in this world, and I don't know, at least the ones I know, pay per performance. As a base salary and as an incentive, if he delivers on a certain things, it could be set up. Seems like we need to more incentivize the people to do the things they need to do and deliver for us in order to get that money. And one, some of that could be saving money for us or filing for grants and things like that that he's going to bring to the town to help us all. So, to me, I think that they should look at something like that. Competitive base salary, which I think you mentioned over here, 143 or whatever, and then an incentive type of arrangement to reach a set of criteria and goals. And that way, they're, everybody would be happy to pay somebody probably if he was reaching out and getting the benefits that we intended to the town. Otherwise, we're just paying the salary, and we're hoping for the best.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Moderator, if I could, just two quick points. Number one, I heard the point made that you're comparing us to bigger areas and town administrators that work in bigger municipalities. Well, a lot of times, being a town administrator in a smaller municipality can be more challenging because you don't have that tax base, and you're trying to stretch the dollar further. So, to say, you know, oh, it's easy to be here in Halifax because we have a smaller tax base, I would argue it's harder because we need to make chicken salad out of chicken you-know-what, right? So, that's one point. The other point, too, is if our town administrator did decide to leave, we'd be on the hook to pay for another search. So, you're shelling out money once again to go back into the pool, so that's taxpayer money to bring in a replacement. So, I just hope we really think long and hard and not cut off our nose to spite our face here. But I will do what the town wants to do.
Candace, yes, to the gentleman right here.
Trying to figure out, so we've already voted that everyone else only gets a 2% raise. Makes it that the moderator should get a higher percentage. I get it, he does this, he does that. Administrator, I apologize. But so doesn't, so doesn't every other person that works for this town, from the town clerk to the health agent, to the, you know, tax collector. What makes this one particular person so valuable that if we don't, if we only give him a 2% raise, we run the risk of losing him?
I believe Mr. Seelig...
Mr. Moderator, like we've, like we've been discussing, this is a going rate. That, you know, that's the going rate for this particular position. We know that because there were contracts that were better than this, that were available, and that this one particular, that's, that's the going rate. That's why we're at this number. That's, that's the only reason.
Okay, I think I'm going to call for a vote. We've had both the pros and the cons on both sides.
And the one up there, you had a hand up.
Yes, right here. Candace, please. Your name and address, please, ma'am?
Deb Winnewitt, 60 Secamo. For one thing, if anybody had watched the selectmen's meeting when they did their interviews for the town administrator, they're all right out there. And I can tell you, I watched them, and our current town administrator blew them away in his, in his, in his experience, in his manner, the way that he spoke, answered their questions without any hesitation. I think we have got an excellent town administrator. And I've worked for towns who did not have a good town administrator. What was said by Mr. Seelig, the talent pool, all, none of those people that are applying for my town. That isn't what we want, that isn't what we need. And I'd just like to say one other thing, and I think saving money is great. We need to do it at home, we need to do it in town. The economy is not good. But every time we vote no, we also have to be prepared to live with the repercussions and the consequences. Simply voting no, without knowing what those are or taking them into consideration, is dangerous. It's dangerous and could cripple this town. Forty-five years of town meetings, I have never seen anything like I've seen tonight. The clapping, the ignorance, the name-calling, forty-five years, I've never seen it. Stop and do the wrong thing for this town. Vote no if you want, but do it with knowledge. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, last one, Nick, right over there, please, gentleman.
Yeah, Mr. Town Administrator and all you people up there, I have a business. I have to work within my budget. You people ought to work within yours instead of taxing the hell out of the rest of us, okay? And I'm leaving because I can't stand this.
Mr. Moderator, as a point of order, is this, we're about to vote on whether to amend the figure to 146,833, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
There's a motion on the floor and seconded to amend line three to 146,833. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your green card. All those opposed to the amendment, please raise your red card. The amendment does not pass.
Mr. Moderator, I would move that we approve line item three at 166,630. Second.
I have a motion and a second for line item three to remain at the 166,630. There's been a motion and a second.
Yes. Motion and a second, yes. Call for a vote?
Okay. So, you know indications, we're going to vote on line number three as presented in the, in the warrant for the 166,630. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Line three passes as presented. All right, let's move on to line item number four. There was a hold. Clerical. Anybody want to speak to that hold? Candace, where are I? Oh, there.
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, yes. So, I just have a question. If we can, if there would be a way to abbreviate this meeting by, by making motions to either raise it or have it continue as is so that we only have one motion and one vote rather than having to go through and do the motion, the vote, and the revote? Does that make sense? Is that, is that...
I'm afraid that if there's a motion to amend and it's been seconded, it has to go through the process.
Okay, so there's no way to...
No other way.
There's no way to amend, I vote, you know, I move to amend or to remain, and if that does not pass, to remain the same way? No?
You could do either or. There was a hold put on it, and you're speaking to line four, select.
I just, sorry, I just wanted to, to move the process along, so sorry.
Seeing no indication of further discussion?
Well, I'll move line item four as printed in the warrant.
Second. Do I have a second?
Yes.
There's a motion, I thought we had one, but okay. There's a motion and a second for line item number four as presented. All those in favor, please raise their green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Line item four passes as presented. Line number five, selectmen expenses.
I would move that as presented in the warrant.
So moved, second. I have a motion and a second for line item number five as, as presented in the, in the warrant. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Line item five passes. Line six.
I would move line six as presented in the warrant.
Second. I have a motion and a second for line item number six, the law account. Seeing no indication, all those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Line six passes. Line seven, town hall electricity.
I would move line seven as presented in the warrant.
I have a motion and a second of line item number seven, town hall electricity for $19,500. All those in favor, raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Line seven passes. Town meeting warrants, line item number eight.
I would move town meet, line item eight as presented in the warrant.
Second. I have a motion and a second for line item number eight. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Line eight passes unanimously. No, line item number nine.
I would move line item nine as presented in the warrant.
Second. It's moved in second for line item nine as presented in the warrant. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red. Line number nine passes. Ten, where a hold was put on, finance committee clerical. Do I have a motion?
I would move line item ten as presented in the warrant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for line item number ten. Seeing no indication of discussion, all those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red. Line ten passes. Fincom expenses, line item number eleven.
I would move line item eleven as presented in the warrant.
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor of line item number eleven as presented, green card. All those opposed, the red card. Passes. Number twelve, accountant's salary. Do I have a motion?
I would move line item twelve as presented in the warrant.
Second. I have a motion and a second for line item number twelve as presented in the warrant. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Line item twelve passes. Thirteen, accountant clerical. Do I have a motion, please?
I would move line item thirteen as presented in the warrant.
Second. A motion and a second. All those in favor of line number thirteen as presented in the warrant, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Passes. Line fourteen, accountant expenses. Have a motion, please?
I would move line item fourteen as presented in the warrant.
Second. A motion and a second for line item fourteen as presented in the warrant. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red. Passes unanimous. Line fifteen, IT wages.
I would move line item, item fifteen as presented in the warrant.
Second. I have a motion and a second for line item fifteen, the IT wages. Yes, ma'am?
Barbara Gayna Pembroke in way. I was just looking at the jump from FY '23 to now, it's almost a $20,000 raise. What constituted such a high raise? What is it, duties changed or hours changed or it's a big jump? Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
This was one of, this was actually the, the position in town that had, that was paid, underpaid the most, sort of required the largest leap for the IT position when we did the compensation classification study. And then fiscal year '22, it was based on a partial, it was part-time, it wasn't full-time.
Okay, so you know any indication of further discussion? All those in favor of line item fifteen as presented in the warrant, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Line item fifteen passes. Sixteen, IT expenditures.
I would move line item sixteen as presented in the warrant.
Second. I have a motion and a second for line item sixteen expenditures. Seeing no indication of, all those in favor of line sixteen as presented in the warrant, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Line sixteen passes. Seventeen, assessors' salary.
I would move line item seventeen as presented in the warrant.
Second. A motion and a second, line item seventeen. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Seventeen passes. Eighteen, principal assessors' appraisal. Do I have a motion, please?
I would move line item eighteen as presented in the warrant.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of line item seventeen as presented in the warrant, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Line eighteen passes. Assessors' clerical. Have a motion, please?
I would move line item nineteen as presented in the warrant.
Second. A motion and a second. All those in favor of line nineteen as presented, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Passes. Line nineteen passes. Line twenty, assessors' expense. Motion, please?
Move line item twenty as presented in the warrant.
Second. A motion and a second, line item twenty. Yes, Mrs. Tinkham.
Why is, why is there such a, Deborah Tinkham, 88 Paradise Lane, why is there such a jump from last year to this coming year? Please.
I'll see if I can find that out.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
This was, in reviewing the departmental budgets, there was an annual fee that we pay to the assessing consultant that we utilize to value personal property and provide other services to us. We had historically funded that with free cash. That's not a good practice because it was an annual operating expense. So, rather than fund it as a capital item through free cash, we added it into the budget this year to be more reflective of what we actually do in an annual operating expense.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all those in favor of article twenty as presented in the warrant, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Line twenty passes. Twenty-one, office machines expenses.
I would move twenty-one as presented in the warrant.
Second. A motion and a second. Where are we? Yes, ma'am?
Hold on. Hannah, Hannah Seelig, get the microphone here, please.
Get you a microphone.
Oh, yeah.
I'm heading me down from Beechwood Road. And I'm just wondering...
You have to speak real close to the mic, man.
Okay, and I'm just wondering why that went from $6,000 to $29,500. I just wondered what kind of office equipment they bought for that amount of money.
Let me see if I can find that out.
Mr. Moderator, so this, the amount, the amount of the increase was actually a decrease from several departmental line items. We're consolidating services, so all the postage is now paid out of that one rather than individually budgeted in every different department. So, what we did was, we subtracted that amount from the other departmental line items and put it all into that one line item to pay for postage.
Okay, all those in favor of line item number twenty-one as presented in the warrant, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Line twenty-one passes. Twenty-two, treasurer collector's salary. Do I have a motion, please?
Well, we did get, we did get a change in the other one, right? So, we should...
Do I get a motion, please?
We could have to vote in the budget. So, Article three sets the salary, Article four funds it. You'd have to amend it, yeah.
Yeah, so, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Uh, it, it, I, I'm ongoing this because of what we did on article three. Uh, but I think, um, line item twenty-two needs to be amended to, uh... Treasurer collector's salary.
Seventy-nine thousand, nine dollars and twenty-three.
Seventy-nine thousand, nine dollars and twenty cents.
Second on that amendment?
And again, uh, the only reason I'm making that amendment is because of what, um, the town meeting did earlier. Um, I do think the, uh, tre- treasurer collector's salary was appropriate at eighty-two. Uh, but I think in order to make this process work correctly, uh, I ha- we have, we should make that amendment.
So I have a, uh, amendment on the floor that's been seconded. We're gonna vote on the amendment. Uh, all those in favor of the amended figure to seventy-nine thousand, zero, zero, nine, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Uh...
That's the amended number, so I would move, uh, the, uh, the new number of seventy-nine thousand, nine dollars and twenty cents.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second for the, uh, amended figure as, uh, as presented. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Line item passes treasurer collector's salary as amended. Line twenty-three, treasurer collector's clerical.
I would move, uh, item twenty-three as stated in the warrant.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of line twenty-three as presented in the warrant, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Line twenty-three passes. What happened? Oh, Debbie? Yes, please. Your question.
I was just wondering what that entails for, um, clerical. Is that for one, two, three people?
I'll see if I can find an answer for that.
Thank you.
What was the question? What, what was the question, Mr. Moderator?
How many people?
There's three positions in that office. There's the assistant treasurer, the assistant collector, and an admin assistant.
Yes, there is three.
Three people.
Okay, all those in, uh, in favor of, uh...
Twenty-three?
Line twenty-three as presented in the warrant. All in favor, raise your green card. All opposed, raise your red. Passes. Uh, line twenty-four treasurer, expense.
I'd move line item twenty-four as presented in the warrant.
Second. So motion and a second, line twenty-four. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red. Twenty-four passes. Twenty-five, collectors' expense.
I would move line item twenty-five as presented in the warrant.
Second. A motion and a second. All those in favor of line twenty-five, please raise your green card. All opposed, raise your red. Passes. Line twenty-five. Line twenty-six.
Would move line item twenty-six as presented in the warrant.
Second. Just a reminder, that was the, uh, the typo on, uh, on, on this particular page where it's supposed to be fiscal year twenty-three, not twenty-two. It's just a typo. Okay, has a motion and a second of line twenty-six. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please your red. Line twenty-six passes. Twenty-seven, tax title treasurer.
I would move twenty-seven as presented in the warrant.
Second. A motion and a second of line twenty-seven as presented. All those in favor, raise your green card. All opposed, raise your red. Line twenty-seven passes. Town clerk salary, line twenty-eight.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Um, I think, um, I can write that number down. Eighty cents. Eighty cents? Okay, Mr. Moderator, uh, again, um, on, uh, line item twenty-eight, given what town meeting voted earlier tonight, that, uh, uh, line item itself should be amended, and I would move that we amend line item twenty-eight to seventy-three thousand, eight hundred thirty-seven dollars and eighty cents.
Second.
Again, we do that with regret because we do think that the original number was, uh, appropriate, but town meeting has already decided, uh, on a different number.
Okay, so we're voting on, uh, line twenty-nine on the amended figure of seventy-three thousand.
Line item twenty-eight. If I was misspoke, it's line item twenty-eight, town clerk salary.
It is line twenty-eight.
Yes.
Twenty-eight. Yeah, it's getting late. Seventy-three thousand, eight thirty-nine, thirty. As amended.
I thought I wrote these numbers down somewhere. I can't find them. Why know where they are? They're over here.
Okay, I had thirty cents. Missed it by fifty cents. Uh, the amended figure is seventy-three thousand, eight thirty-seven. All in favor of, uh, line twenty-eight on the amended figure, please raise your green card. All those opposed, raise your red. Passes.
Mr. Moderator, I would now move that line item twenty-eight be, uh, approved at seventy-three thousand, eight thirty-seven, and eighty-seven. Yeah, we, we move to amend the number.
Oh, it was amended, so now we have to vote. Okay, got a little lost there. Okay, on the amended figure, voting, uh, line twenty-eight. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red. Passes. Line twenty-nine, town clerk clerical.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I'd move line twenty-nine as, as reported in the warrant.
Second. A motion and a second, line twenty-nine. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, raise your red. Line twenty-nine passes. Line thirty, town, town clerk expenses.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
I would move line item thirty as presented in the warrant.
Second. We have a motion and a second on, uh, line thirty as presented. All those in favor, raise your green card. All those opposed, raise your red. Passes. Line thirty-one, elect register.
I would move line thirty-one as presented in the warrant.
Second. We have a motion and a second for line thirty-one. All those in favor, raise your green card. All those opposed, raise your red. Thirty-one passes. Thirty-two, wage and personnel expenses.
Remove line item thirty-two as presented in the warrant.
Nick, if you could, please.
If we dissolved the wage of personnel board, why is there an expense, please?
See if I can find that out.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, no changes were voted to the wage and personnel, uh, bylaw for the, the two percent. So, uh, this is used for expenses associated with it, such as, uh, the dues for the mass municipal human resources. So there's dues associated with that. Whether we have a, uh, personnel board or not, we want to be part of that, but it's reflective of the wage of personnel.
You're welcome. All those in favor of, uh, line thirty-two as presented, green card. All those opposed, red card. Line thirty-three, recruitment and employment costs.
I'd move line thirty-three as presented in the warrant.
Second. A motion and a second, line thirty-three. All those in favor as presented, green card. All those opposed, red card. Passes. Line thirty-four.
I'd move line thirty-four as presented in the warrant.
Second. A motion and a second on line thirty-four. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, red card. Passes. Thirty-five, conservation wages.
I would move line item thirty-five as presented in the warrant.
Second. I have a motion and a second on line thirty-five. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Thirty-five passes. Planning board expenses, line thirty-seven.
I'd move line thirty-seven as presented in the warrant.
Second. I have a motion and a second, line thirty-seven. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, raise your red card. Passes. Thirty-eight, zoning board of appeals expenses.
I would move line thirty-eight as presented in the warrant.
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red. Passes. Regulatory clerical.
I would move line thirty-nine as presented in the warrant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, line thirty-nine. All those in favor, raise your green card. All those opposed, red card. Line thirty-nine passes. Line forty, building committee clerical.
I would move line forty as presented in the warrant.
Second.
Motion and a second on line forty as presented. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, the red card. Passes. Building committee expense, line forty-one.
Move line forty-one as presented in the warrant.
Second.
A motion and a second, line forty-one as presented. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, the red card. Passes. Forty-two, town buildings, director of building maintenance.
I would move line forty-two as presented in the warrant.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for line forty-two.
Forty-two, right?
That's what I said, forty-two. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, your red card. Passes. Town building custodial, line forty-three.
I would move line forty-three as, as, um, provided in the warrant.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, line forty-three. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, the red card. Passes. Forty-four, town building expenses.
I would move item forty-four as presented in the warrant.
Second.
Motion and a second, line forty-four is presented. All those in favor, please raise your green. All those opposed, please raise the red card. Passes. Forty-five, town building preventative maintenance. Can I get a motion, please?
I would move, uh, line item forty-five as presented in the warrant.
Second.
A motion and a second, line forty-five. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Passes. Forty-six, town building snow and ice expense.
I would move item forty-six as presented in the warrant.
Second.
Motion and a second for line forty-six as presented. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All opposed, the red card. It passes. All right, that concludes. Move on to...
Mr. Moderator.
Mike Upmartin, fifty-six Aldana Road. Seeing we've gone through the first group, I move that we go back to doing all of these in batches.
Do I have, I have a motion and a second?
To go back, to go back to batches instead of reading them individually?
Works for me.
Is there a...
We have a motion and a second. To go back, instead of going line by line, we'll do sections as we originally started. Uh, all those in favor? All those opposed? We're gonna go section by section. Here we go. Public safety, police, lines forty-seven through fifty-three. Hold on, what was it, forty-seven?
Hold on.
Anything else? All right, we'll vote since, I'm sorry? Just, uh, hold on forty-seven? All right, then, we can vote forty-eight through fifty-three and then go back.
Everything without a hold.
Okay. All right, there's a hold on forty-seven, so we're gonna vote on lines forty-eight through fifty-three.
Move as printed in the warrant.
I have a motion, please.
I would move them as printed in the warrant.
Second. I have a motion and second, uh, on, on lines forty-eight through fifty-three as presented in the warrant. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Passes unanimous. Now let's go back to, uh, line forty-seven.
Yes, on line forty-seven, um, could we get a breakout, please? It, there's a new position, it says down with the asterisk of the deputy police chief. We would like to see a breakout of what the police chief's salary is for twenty-four, for twenty-five FY and for the deputy chief. Instead of it being lumped altogether.
Okay, Mary, I'll find that out.
So it's two salaries. The deputy chiefs for fiscal twenty-five is one hundred and nineteen thousand, four hundred and eighty. And the chiefs is, uh, one fifty-two, three, seven, eight.
Okay.
I would, I would move item forty-seven as presented in the warrant.
Second. I have a motion and a second of line number forty-seven as presented in the warrant. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Okay, let's move on to the next section. We're on page twelve, by the way. Public safety fire. We're gonna go lines fifty-four through sixty-two. Do I have a motion?
I would move, uh, line items fifty-four through sixty-two as presented in the warrant.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for lines fifty-four through sixty-two. Seeing no indication of discussion. All those in favor of lines fifty-four through sixty-two as presented in the warrant, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Passes. Uh, public safety, other public safety, lines sixty-three through sixty-nine, oh, through this.
I would, I would move...
Yeah, through sixty-nine, sixty-three.
Move line items sixty-three through sixty-nine as presented in the warrant.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to approve line sixty-three through sixty-nine in public safety. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Passes unanimous. Okay, lot, line not, we're on page thirteen now. Uh, line, uh, seventy, dispatch services. Do I have a motion, please?
I would move line seventy as presented in the warrant.
Second. I have a motion and a second, line number seventy. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Passes. Okay, our next one is schools. Uh, line seventy-one through seventy-three.
Move line seventy-one through seventy-three as presented in the warrant.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Line seventy-one through seventy-three as presented in the warrant. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Passes unanimous. Uh, next section, uh, public works highway, lines seventy-four through eighty-seven. On page thirteen.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Uh, would you hold line item seventy-four?
Line item seventy-four.
Seventy-four. Other than that, if there's no other holds, I would move line item seventy-five through eighty-seven as presented in the warrant.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to, uh, line seventy-five through eighty-seven as presented in the warrant. All those in favor, raise your green card. All those opposed, raise your red card. Passes.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, line seventy...
Again, given the, um, uh, earlier, uh, motion on article three, uh, line item seventy-four, we would move to amend to eighty-two thousand, five hundred and one dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Let me just double-check that number. Eighty-two thousand, five oh one, sixty-eight.
Yes, correct.
Bingo.
And again, the explanation is that town meeting has, uh, voted on article three, uh, that number as the salary.
Okay, seeing no indication, uh, we'll vote on, uh, line seventy-four as amended.
Well, if this is, we're moving to amend. First motion would be just to amend it, then we have to go back and vote for number.
Okay, so we're voting now to that amended, to amend that figure from, uh, eighty-four thousand, nine thirteen to eighty-two thousand, five... to that amended, to amend that figure from, uh, eighty-four thousand, nine thirteen to eighty-two thousand, five oh one, sixty-eight. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Uh, line seventy-four has been amended. Do I have a motion now, uh, to vote on line seventy-four as the amended figure?
Yes, I would make that motion that, uh, we vote on seventy-four as amended.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Line seventy-four as amended. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Passes.
Cemetery?
Uh, okay, we're on, uh, page fourteen now. Public Works Cemetery. Lines eighty-eight through ninety. Do I have a motion, please?
I would move, um, line items eighty-eight through ninety as presented in the warrant.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Lines eighty-eight through ninety as presented in the warrant. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red. Passes unanimous. Public Works Water, lines ninety-one through one oh one. Do I have a motion, please?
Mister Moderator?
Whoa, hold on. What line?
I can't hear.
You have to come up to the mic, please.
Come to the microphone, please.
Line one oh one. Adrian McDougal, thirty-two Hillside. Why are we not increasing this budget?
Why?
When we're increasing all the other budgets, our system is falling apart. Why are we not increasing this budget? That is my simple question.
Ask the water commissioner.
Mister Moderator, I believe our water superintendent is here, but this is reflective of what the Water Department requested. So if there is, uh, detail being requested on the operation of the Water Department, I'd recommend that the Water Superintendent provide that explanation.
I'll ask him. Sir.
I'm not even sure what the question is.
Just pick a little closer to the target.
The budget was just level-funded, so, I mean, there's nothing else going on.
Sure.
Um, I don't know if, I mean, I suggest that, that our, uh, water commissioner join the local Facebook pages, or I, I also suggest that our residents start calling him because we have serious problems here in this town with our water. People, I mean, I go through filters like nothing. You know? All these problems with the wells. I don't understand why this budget isn't increasing to fix these problems. I did a, a poll today on, uh, Halifax Locals Facebook page, and, um, the majority of these, of the people who responded said their top concern was our water and our roads. Not the salaries, not all this other stuff, not, you know? Not even schools. A couple of them said this, you know, uh, funding Halifax Elementary, which we're losing. We're doing cuts, but nobody's, nobody's addressing this elephant in the room. We need to have clean water. This is ridiculous. You know? I have to, I, I have five-stage filtration and my, you know? Anybody else? Wanna raise your hand if you have water issues?
Well, let's hold on. Let's just address the moderator. The only thing I could, I can tell you is if your question originally was, why is it going down instead of going up?
Why, why, why are we not raising this budget?
If we increase it, you have to show where the money is gonna come from. You can, you can decrease it, but to increase it, you have to show where the money would come from and how much.
We're raising everything else, so...
Do you have another one?
Where's that money coming from?
Mrs. Nolan, maybe you can, uh, you can add some, something to this.
Sandra Nolan, Town Accountant. If you look at the budget, Sandra Nolan, Town Accountant, if you look at the budget that's on the blue sheet, that's the amended budget. And, um, it was a clerical error in the beginning. But the budget did go up. We also have a capital project that is three or four years right now going on, where we've put in about a million forty thousand already. We just, we, last year passed a three billion dollar bond allowance, saying that the treasurer could borrow up to three million dollars to do this water project. Um, we are in, further in the warrant. You'll see there's a five hundred thousand dollar article to go towards this project. The Water Department is working on the water issues.
Okay, thank you.
Mister Moderator?
Yes.
I would move, um, line items ninety-one through one oh one, uh, as presented in the warrant with the editorial corrections that, uh, Town Meeting has copies of.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on, uh, line one oh one as presented to include the, the handouts. All those, that's on a blue sheet, I understand. Right, right? Thank you, Sandy. Uh, all those in favor of line one oh one as presented, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. One oh one passes. Public Works Solid Waste Management. Uh, lines one oh two through one oh seven.
Lot, Mister Moderator?
Sorry, I guess I said that wrong. It's, uh... No, we did ninety-one?
I thought they say that's what we said.
Alright. Public Works Lines ninety-one through one oh one as presented on the warrant. Do I have a motion, please?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Well, with the amendments as, uh, on the blue handout, or the editorial amendments.
Right. Okay, yes, Deb. Hold on ninety-one? Okay, we'll vote on ninety-two through, uh, one oh one and one oh one as amended.
Yes, that's my motion, correct. As amended, uh, well, well, with the editorial changes, yes.
Second to ninety-two to one oh one. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, lines ninety-two through one oh one. Please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Thank you. We'll go to line, uh, ninety-one. Deb, do you, would you like to amend that? Or would you, would you like to address it? You gotta come to the mic, please.
Sorry. Um, I would like to amend it to the two percent that all the other directors have gotten out of the salaries.
Uh, okay, as we discussed before, we can go percentages, but we need an actual number. Okay.
So, Mister Moderator?
Yes.
The, with the bylaw change not being passed, the two percent would not be reflective. It would, this figure would be voted, but the two percent increase would not be paid. The, it's not just a two percent reduction because there are other items that go into this specific line item, uh, such as a clothing allowance.
Oh, I see.
So this is like the other, uh, line items for the wages, where if Town Meeting votes it, it would just end up being surplus revenue for what is not spent.
Okay.
Which case I would move line item ninety-one as presented in the warrant.
Second.
A motion and a second. Line ninety-one as presented. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, your red card. Passes. Okay, Public Works Solid Waste Management. Lines one oh two through one oh seven.
I would move lines one oh two through one oh seven as presented in the warrant.
Second.
A motion and a second. Lines one oh two through one oh seven as presented at the warrant. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Passes. Health and Human Services. Uh, we're on page fifteen, by the way. Uh, one, line one oh eight through one twenty-two.
I would move line items one oh eight through one twenty-two as presented in the warrant.
Second.
Motion and a second. Lines one oh eight to one twenty-two as presented. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Passes unanimous. Uh, Culture and Recreation. Lines one twenty-three through, uh...
One thirty-seven.
One thirty-seven.
Yes, I would...
One, that, the last six are on page sixteen. So lines one twenty-three through one thirty-seven.
I would move...
A motion.
I would move line items one twenty-three through one thirty-seven as presented in the warrant.
Second.
A mo, a motion and a second to approve lines, uh, one twenty-three through one thirty-seven as presented. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Passes unanimous. Okay, uh, Debt Services, page sixteen. One thirty-eight, lines one thirty-eight to one forty-one.
I would move lines one thirty-eight to one forty-one as presented in the warrant.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve lines one thirty-eight to one forty-one as presented. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Passes unanimous. Fixed Costs. Lines one forty-two through one fifty.
I, I would move lines one forty-two through one fifty as presented in the warrant.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve lines one forty-two to one fifty as presented. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Passes unanimous. Funding notes.
So, lottery? Lottery?
Lottery. Lottery. Yes. Oh, yeah, okay, now that we got through Articles one through four, where they were all related, now we go through the lottery. So we pick out by lottery what, uh, article we're gonna do.
Article nine.
Mister Moderator?
Yes, sir.
You're gonna write into it, man.
That's it. Here we go. Uh, I move that the town hereby accepts Section three to seven inclusive of Chapter forty-four B of the General Law, otherwise known as the Massachusetts Community Preservation Act, by approving a surcharge on real property for the purposes permitted by said act, including the acquisition, acquisition, creation and preservation of open space, the acquisition, preservation, rehabilitation and restoration of historic resources, the acquisition, creation, preservation, rehabilitation and restoration of land for recreational use, the acquisition, creation, preservation and support of community housing, and the rehabilitation and restoration of such open space and community housing that is acquired or created as provided under said act. That the amount of such surcharge on the real property shall be one point five percent of the annual real estate tax levy against real property commencing in fiscal year twenty twenty-six, and that the town hereby accepts the following exemption from such surcharge permitted under Section three E of Said Act One. Property owned and occupied as a domicile by any person who qualifies for low-income housing or low or moderate income senior housing in the town as defined in Section two of Said Act. Number two, one hundred thousand of the value of each taxable parcel of residential real property. And number three, one hundred thousand of the value of each taxable parcel of Class III commercial property and Class IV industrial property as defined in Section two A of Said Chapter fifty-nine.
Would you like to speak to this, sir?
I would. Uh, alright, so, I know that's a mouthful. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I need a second. Sorry.
Oh, I, a second.
Alright.
Yes, sir. Motion and a second.
Alright, we had a motion and a second. Okay. So, if you guys will bear with me here, I'll try to make this as quick as possible because it's been a lengthy evening, uh, to say the least. If you go, if you guys don't mind directing your attention here to the, the big board, the video board, I would like to break down a, a program that I would like the Halifax residents to consider. This is called the Community Preservation Act, and it truly is investing together in the future of Halifax. So, what is the CPA or the Community Preservation Act? The Community Preservation Act allows communities to establish a fund that is specifically dedicated to historic preservation, the preservation of open space, recreation and affordable housing. Where does this money come from? And judging on the tenor tonight, I have my work cut out for me here. Funds are collected as a one percent to three percent annual surcharge for local property taxes. So here is what this article is proposing. One point five percent. For example, eighty-four dollars per average Halifax residential assessment. There are exemptions to the plan. Your exemption is for your first one hundred thousand of assessed property value, and that applies to both residential and commercial. There's also an exemption for qualified ownership of Halifax low-income housing and low-income and moderate-income senior housing. Also, a taxpayer receiving a regular property tax abatement or exemption will also receive a prorated reduction in the surcharge. So what does that all mean? We're gonna do some quick math. So on the left there, you guys can see the sample tax bill here in Halifax. So the average assessed value of a single-family home here in Halifax is four hundred and ninety-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Our tax rate per one thousand is fourteen point four zero. So, the average property tax bill of the average, I know, quote-unquote, average home here in Halifax... Microphone's in the way. Seven thousand, seventy-three dollars. Thank you, Najah. Now, if we enact this CPA plan, here's what happens. This is the right-hand column. We would immediately take one hundred thousand dollars off your assessed value of your property. So instead of your property coming in at four hundred and ninety-one thousand, it gets knocked down to three hundred and ninety-one thousand. So the assessed, the CPA tax basis for that number would be five thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars instead of the original seven thousand, seventy-three. This is just for the CPA part. We would then take our one point five percent and multiply it by that reduced tax basis. So we would take G and multiply it by F, and that's how we get the average surcharge of eighty-four dollars and fifty cents. So if we did enact this plan, the property tax bill would go from seven thousand, seventy-three dollars on the average home to seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents. So I have there at the bottom. Are you willing to invest twenty-three cents a day for a better future here in Halifax? Hold on, I know, there's still more to come. And again, if anybody has questions, please remember the slide, we'll go back to them at the end. I wanna make sure everybody understands this. So, how much would this generate for our town? Well, there are twenty-eight hundred tax bills here in Halifax. If the average taxpayer is about eighty-four, fifty, eighty-five dollars per tax bill, we're looking at estimated money for these projects, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. That's just money that we as a town set aside for these programs. That's not included in any sort of state contribution. So where's the, where's the, the good in doing this? Well, here's the communities here in town, or, sorry, here's the communities here in the state that are part of the CPA. That's the state of Massachusetts there. Both the orange and the green are communities that are part of the CPA. It's a hundred and ninety-six communities in the Commonwealth. That's fifty-four percent of our towns are part of this program. It includes Boston, it includes almost entirely the Cape and the Islands. It's down in the south coast of Fall River. It's north in Peabody. It's out west in Springfield, even further west, out in Stockbridge and in central Mass and Worcester. If you look a little closer into what towns around us are part of this program, this right here, to me, is, says volumes. These are towns in our area that are part of the Community Preservation Act. So as you can see, the green are the communities that are part of this plan. We're the yellow. So, it's basically us, East Bridgewater, Brockton, and I think Avon are the only areas, basically in southeastern Massachusetts, that are not part of the Community Preservation Act. So, what states are getting from this plan? So how this works is, every real estate transaction done in the state, a surcharge is assessed. The state takes that money, those surcharges on all real estate transactions, and puts it towards the Community Preservation Act to match the money we put in. Right? So, these are towns here that have set up their surcharges. As you can see, it's a long list. Our neighbors Kingston, they've set theirs at one. We have Pembroke, one, Plimpton, one and a half. We have Carver, they're robust in this plan at three percent. has put to this program for fiscal two thousand and twenty-four. So as you can see, it's a sizable amount of money that is going back to these towns. And then this is through the life of the program. This program has been around for almost twenty years, I think, uh, it might be twenty years, I apologize, I don't know the exact number, more than twenty. So in those twenty years, you guys, these numbers are not funds from the town, these are numbers that the state has given to these communities as part of the Community Preservation Act. So as you can see, you've got Bridgewater with three and a half million, Carver with four million, I mean, it truly adds up. Kingston, our neighbors, have received over three million dollars, and that is state money. That's not our money. That's money that the state is giving us to do these projects, okay? So that's true, that is our tax money, but it's not coming from our town. So over the last five years, the average CPA contribution is over twenty-six percent, all right? Next slide. So how is CPA different? So the adoption of CPA would mean a small property tax increase for Halifax property owners, but there's a difference between CPA and standard taxes. Fund-raised receive an additional annual state contribution. That's why towns sign up for this program. They set money aside, and the town matches a certain percent. The community decides how the funds will be spent. So I know a lot of folks here in Halifax are concerned about the state telling us what to do. Once we get this money, we as a town decide where we're going to spend this money. There's no state fine print on this program. It can also be used as matching funds that are required by many state and federal grants, and also funds are dedicated to projects that are typically underfunded or unfunded. CPA facilitates knowledge of and participation in proposed community projects. How can CPA be adopted? Well, if we vote tonight to okay this initiative, we are not voting to make it set in stone. We are voting to decide to put it on the November ballot. It would go to the ballot as a ballot question, and the town would decide what it wants to do as far as CPA goes. If it passes, we would next have to form a CPA ballot question committee, which would require Secretary of State approval. If the article did not pass, a citizen's petition, petition could also be enacted, and then they would have to follow the same steps through the CPA ballot question committee. So the ballot would go to the vote of the presidential election this coming November fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, and then if it passes, the town of Halifax would be on the hook to form a community preservation committee, and that would be voted at the May two thousand and twenty-five town meeting, and then the town would have to come up with a draft community preservation plan. All right, so we have this money set aside, and we have money coming to us from the state. How do we disperse this money? Where, how do we decide where we're putting it? Well, we as the town of Halifax would form a CPA committee, right? And that committee would facilitate all the proposals for all the projects. So essentially, if anyone in town had an idea that they wanted to use this money for, you present it to our CPA committee, they would vet the projects, and then they would bring them to town meeting. So town meeting would be the ones that voted on what we wanted to do. Of the buckets that we have, we would have to maintain at least ten percent in historic preservation, ten percent in open space and recreation, and ten percent in affordable housing, and then after that, the remaining seventy percent, we can spend however we like it, whatever the town of Halifax decides is important to us. So once we have this passed, if it passes, who is on our community preservation committee? It's usually a conservation committee member, a historical commission member, a housing authority member, a park commissioner, a planning board, and up to four at-large members. The committee would have to be at least five members large, and no more than nine members large. Does that make sense? That was terrible English. All right, so how do we disperse them? As I said, our committee would take in and approve all the projects, but all of these projects, as I said, would go to town meeting, and we as a town would decide what we would like to approve the funding for. So again, you'll see there in the green, Halifax residents ultimately control the funding for CPA. All right, let's get to the nitty-gritty here. What projects have we done here in Halifax that we could have put this money to? Number one, the first and foremost is Hops Playground. I was president of the Friends of Hops for six years. It took us six years to raise money for that playground. If we were a CPA community, we would have had that playground in a year to a year and a half. So one of the benefits of being part of the CPA is it goes to projects like our amazing Hops Playground. Our walking trail repairs, of those of you that have walked on our trail, we spent fifteen thousand to redo that. We could have used the state money and CPA money to do that, and then also, we put in a cool Gaga ball pit, older folks ask your younger ones, and that was two thousand dollars. So again, projects that we could have put this to. Future projects that we can do, our youth and athletic field renovations, fifty thousand dollars, we could use our money towards that. Our tennis and basketball courts, if anybody has been, been down to our basketball courts or our tennis courts, they're borderline unusable. Good luck playing tennis on our tennis courts. Those are projects that are gonna need to be done. And again, our trail, believe it or not, is, is already growing in, that's gonna need some, some love too. So that's a project that could use this money as well. Open space, this is big here in Halifax. I know we love our open space, but right now, we don't have a fund set aside to keep our open space. So we could use this towards town beach renovation and ADA compliance, that's about twenty thousand dollars to help fix up our beach. We could use it for land acquisition. I know folks like to keep our open space open. If there's a property here in Halifax that we wanna keep open and make sure doesn't get developed, we could use this funding to keep that property open. And also, we have the ability to exercise the town's right of first refusal. So if any property did come available, we would be able to, to look at purchasing that said property. Historic preservation, this is a big one. We love our history in Halifax. Those of you that have been to holidays in Halifax, we have some amazing buildings here in town. We truly don't have any money set aside to keep those buildings from essentially falling down. So projects that could have qualified, we recently redid some blacksmith stuff there. Unfortunately, the blacksmith shop as it stands now, you can't enter it, it's unsafe, so we would need to do some major structural stuff there. And also, when we remove, when we relocated the Brockton store, we could have used this program to help offset costs for that major endeavor too. Future projects that can qualify, as I said, the blacksmith shop restoration, we also have the old schoolhouse that we need to take care of, and the historic cemetery preservation. We have some really cool old cemeteries here in town, we can use some of our money there to make sure that we don't lose our history with our cemeteries. The other bucket that I'm talking about is housing, so we could use it in housing to keep affordable units and prevent losing to market rate upon resale. We can rehabilitate existing vacant housing, we can convert vacant space into senior housing, we can develop new units with good design and positive environmental stewardship. But again, this is all our decision. We spend the money how we wanna spend it. So if housing is something we wanna focus on, we can, if not, we can look at other avenues. These are things on our five-year capital plan that would be eligible for CPA funding. So we're looking at possibly a redo of our town hall exterior, that's estimated at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The recreational courts, as I said, is anywhere from three hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand dollars. We don't have, we need to update our open space and recreational plan, and the restoration of the blacksmith shop, as I said there as well. So I know that was kind of a, a long-winded presentation there, but what I'm looking for us for as a vote here as a town is to at least kick the tires on this. I think it's a fantastic, it's a fantastic program to help keep Halifax Halifax. I know that has been a battle cry here in town for a long time, and I think community preservation is essentially supposed to do what it does, which is preserve Halifax. If we wanna keep our open spaces open, if we wanna keep our fields looking great and in good shape, if we wanna preserve the history of this town, if we wanna do any sort of affordable stuff when it comes to housing, it gives us more, it gives us more bang for the buck. These are more projects that we're gonna have to do anyway, so I would hope that we would take some money from the state to help us offset some of that cost. And again, I know, you know, presenting you guys, given what we were talking about tonight, an eighty-four dollar surcharge on the average taxpayer, I know that's, no one's a huge fan of that, but I would argue, this are, these are things that we need to do anyway. These are things that are coming down the pike, these are things that we've kicked the can down the road for a long time, and other communities have jumped in, and it's unfortunate that it's taken us twenty years to jump into this program, but I would, I would argue that we should at least put it on the ballot to let the townsfolk of Halifax decide whether we wanna be a CPA community, a program that I think is a long time coming for Halifax.
Yes, sir.
Oh, sorry, one more, one more slide, sorry, 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 I know, I know, sorry about that. I forgot we had one more, sorry. So how can we help pass this on? If you wanna pass, my bad, guys. So from tonight through October, I urge everybody here to talk to your friends that live in other towns that have CPA, ask them what they're doing. Plimpton right now is looking at putting in lights in their ball field using CPA funding. There's a lot of really, really cool projects that we can do with this to, to kind of represent our town well, and you can also help publicize this in advance of the election on November fifth. And then beyond November, two thousand and twenty-five, if this should pass, consider volunteering for Halifax's future CPA committee and evaluate the, the projects that are being proposed. I apologize. And this there is a website for more information, please, I urge you to check it out.
Jeff Bolger, Brandeis Circle.
Thank you, sir. Yes.
The Community Preservation Act is just another tax hike that bypasses the two-third vote requirement in the Prop two and a half override process.
You gotta speak into the mic.
They can't hear you.
The two and a half override process. To spend money from a CPA account, you don't have to get a two-thirds vote, all you have to have is a simple majority, which I don't think we wanna do. Also, looking on the internet, there's a number of studies that show this state matching grant program that you talk about, actually, when it's analyzed, it shows that poorer communities, which I would suggest Halifax is one, are actually funding wealthier communities with the money that the state gives out. One thing you didn't mention is that in two thousand and twelve, the legislature amended the CPA law to allow rental assistance to support individuals who are eligible for community housing, or to an entity that provides such housing for the purpose of making housing affordable. Given what's already going on with the MBTA mandating affordable housing, and the governor suggesting that people ought to be placing illegal aliens in their vacant bedrooms, who's to say that if Halifax has not met its required affordable housing stock, that the state won't require the town to use the CPAs for this rental assistance? Just think about it. Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Moderator, if I could, address some of those issues. Again, we decide how we spend this money. So him bringing up, or the, the thought of affordable housing, if the town of Halifax decides they don't wanna spend CPA money on the affordable housing project, we don't spend the money on it. And to a point about the MBTA, as far as...
That's multifamily.
Oh, multifamily, sorry, I misspoke, I said, I said affordable housing, it's multifamily. So I apologize. But again, housing, housing comes to us. If, if we decide with CPA, we don't wanna spend our money on housing, and we wanna spend it on open space, and we wanna spend it on recreation, as long as we keep ten percent of the money in that bucket, it's our decision. So the state is not forcing us to invest in any one of these four buckets, they're letting us decide. And then to the MBTA point, I would argue that this program would help, because again, we would be raising money if we wanted to keep space open in any particular region of this, of our town, this would help us secure open space, that would be town-owned. So I think that, that in itself is a, a major part of why we should consider this program.
Thank you. Yes.
Yeah, I, I just wanna say that back in the...
Your name and your address, please.
Deb Winowitz, sixty-sixth circle. I just wanna say, back in the early two thousands, when all the other towns were jumping on board with this, Halifax voted no. Hindsight is a great thing, 'cause if you talk to any one of those towns and ask them what they have done in the last fifteen, twenty years with that money, you'd be amazed. And we haven't had a dime. We actually could have built that senior center with CPA funds and have it come in under the levy limit. We should have done it then, and I hope we do it now.
Okay, thank you. Candace, right behind you, up top. Thank you.
My name's Bob Cole, I live at three ninety Twin Lakes. The matching funds from the state, if you read the law, the matching funds, first-round distributions for those are for towns that have a three percent surtax, not a one and a half.
I'm sorry, sir, I can't, can you, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
You gotta speak closer to the mic.
Nice and loud, I apologize.
So the state distributions that you talked about, the first-round distributions that the state passes out is for towns that charge three percent, not one and a half percent. So you're not guaranteed those funds, you're guaranteed, you may be guaranteed in the second or third round, but you're not guaranteed in the first round. That's in, that's in the law.
Sure.
So you still have to put money in each one of those accounts, and you can only spend it for those accounts. So if you put money into affordable housing and you don't do affordable housing, you can't move that money somewhere else to use it on, on a more worthwhile project, it stays there.
But I see your point, but there's more than just affordable housing you can do with that housing bucket, there are many other programs we could look into. It doesn't necessarily just have to be for affordable housing program, there are other, helping veterans with housing, there are other housing programs that we could use that ten percent for, and again, it's just ten percent that we have to keep in the bucket, we can use that other funding for whatever we as a town decide to do.
But you're gonna have to put that ten percent in that bucket every year.
Correct.
For five years.
Correct.
So when you figure out the money that you're using, you're gonna be putting money into, possibly putting money into an account that you can't use.
I would, I would argue that there will be, there will be some sort of housing program that, that would be beneficial to the residents of Halifax, whether it's, you know, affordable, whether it's veteran help, whether there's some part of it that would, that would make sense for us as a community.
Thank you.
Sarah Nobles, fifty-five Lincoln Street. I own a business in Marshfield, which has been long a participant of this.
Please speak closer. Can you speak up, please, nice and loud?
I have a business in Marshfield, they participated in CPA for a long time, so I've seen the benefits of it, and one of the things they use theirs for was they bought of, their, for their bucket, their affordable housing bucket, was they bought a building and turned it into veterans' housing, which is one of the options you could do, but the amount of things they've done with the CPA funds is amazing. They've bought land and turned it into parks, they've built a playground, they've done historical renovations, like, all of the, like you said, all the things that we could have done with it if we'd adopted this earlier is, it's really astounding. So I, I do think that we should at least put it on the ballot and let people vote for it, we're just a small sample of the town, at least let the whole town vote for it instead of just the few of us that are here, but I do think that it is beneficial for the town, especially to get those matching funds from the state, and we're gonna have to pay for most of this stuff regardless, so we might as well let the state money to help us out.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Adrian McDowell, thirty-two Hillside Ave. Can those affordable housing funds be applied to our already-existing Halifax Housing Authority projects?
Yes.
To improve that?
Yes. Yep, it could go towards our housing down on fifty-eight there as well, so, again, there are plans that, that we could use to benefit us, I have no doubt in my mind, and, and as the, the person said before, it's, it's unfortunate that it's taken us this long to jump in, because I do feel like Halifax would look a lot different today if we were a CPA community than, than it does now, because as I said, we've kicked the can on a lot of this stuff. Everyone here is trying to preserve Halifax, and that's what this program does. And again, it's a, no one likes to come up here and, and talk surcharges, you know, but I have to do what I think is right for Halifax, and the vision for Halifax with this program, I think, makes sense. And again, I would argue, we're not voting to, to do this tonight, we're voting to put it on the ballot and let the town decide, so there's that aspect too.
Peter, please. Your name and address, please.
Pete Parsland, sixty-five Island Circle. I, I don't think there's a parent in town who doesn't go to another sporting event in another town and is taken aback by how well their facilities are compared to ours, and regardless how you feel about the surcharge and implementing this... I, I don't think there's a parent in town who doesn't go to another sporting event in another town and is taken aback by how well their facilities are compared to ours. And regardless how you feel about the surcharge and implementing this, I, I think it's only the right thing to do for, for not 200 or 300 people at 10 o'clock at night in the elementary school gym to make this decision, but to put it on the ballot in the highest percentage of the town that votes in any election, to be able to make this decision for everybody instead of the people in this room.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to ask for the Finance Committee recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends?
And it was proposed by the Board of Selectmen.
It is. Yep. You have a couple there.
Yes, Candace, right. Oh, she's right behind you, Candy Niffen.
Mr. Moderator, I, I have been sitting here and it's, I haven't heard what everyone's said, so I apologize if I repeat what's been said. When I heard this was being considered for the ballot, I actually did some looking into it, because I never could understand why we're always so late to the party. 20 years ago, this was introduced, and at that time, the state reimbursed 100% what you gave, what, what towns gave. And just, just looking at the information, Kingston was, was one of the communities that voted, they started out at 3% and they have since reduced it to 1%. And they have brought in with their community contributions and the state matches, since 2006, they have brought in $9.6 million for projects that they've done using these funds. Hanson, we heard that we're compared with Hanson. Hanson has been enrolled since 2008, and they've brought in $3.8 million for community preservation funds, and they've done amazing projects. The Nathaniel Mill, I, I mean, the projects that these towns are doing, and I know this has been said, are unbelievable. And their, their baseball fields, they just, last week at their town meeting appropriated $50,000 from preservation funds to upgrade and renovate some of their fields. I believe their baseball fields at one of the schools, not even their main baseball place, but, but baseball fields. Plimpton, Plimpton has belonged since 2009, they've brought in 1.6 million. They're voting at their town meeting this year, I believe, I don't know the amount, but their vote, one of the things they're voting for preservation funds is lights for some of their athletic fields. The projects that have been done are really what made me feel that this is a no-brainer, and, and I apologize, I just believe that we have an obligation to protect what we have here. And we have a blacksmith shop we can't go in because it's not structurally sound, and yet we flock to Halifax, Halifax Holiday in Halifax, where we all enjoy our, our historical properties, but we're doing nothing to maintain them. And so do we go and watch them fall down? I don't, I don't get why we haven't done this sooner. Restoration, several towns have restored and preserved their town historical books and records. We have a library, or a museum that used to be a library, filled with artifacts and historical papers. We, we have an obligation to reserve that for future, to preserve that for future generations. We could do that with these funds. Other towns have put in new fields, new playgrounds. If, we can't use it for maintenance, but if we want to replace a piece of equipment that is, or add to our current playground, or make it handicapped, more handicapped accessible, we can use these funds for that. Abington put in three pickleball courts behind their senior center. Walking paths, I was at a selectman's meeting when this article was discussed, and there were two park commissioners there who were at the same meeting talking about hoping they could put paths in, walking trails in off 106 west of the, west of the church. This could be done with this money. There, there's so much more that, that we can do that we're not doing, and I see this as a savings account for things that we do not budget for, but which matter or should matter to our community. The state match varies, it's no longer 100%, but that's because so many towns have signed on. I think it's time for us to, to do the same thing. It's also, the other thing that, that I will just add, and then I promise to end, is it's one of the most controlled pieces of legislation in favor of our town that I have ever seen. And I've been involved in town, in this town for, I've lived in this town for over 40 years, and I've been involved for much of that time. Here, you, we get total control, we decide how much we put aside, it goes on the ballot, which is, is look around the room, the people that have left, this isn't representative of our town, we need to give everyone an opportunity to participate in this. And all of the expenditures are controlled by us. So I hope people will support this, we are late party, and a lot we need to do, and we could do it with this program.
All right, thank you. All right, yes ma'am, last one.
Hi, Jackie Fons from 58 McCullin. So this money can't be put into the school at...
Can't hear you, you have to speak.
Oh, I'm so sorry. So none of this money can be put into the school at all?
No.
Like, it's all historic?
No, no school, no school, no school projects, no town, town projects.
Okay, because if I'm going to pay a higher tax rate, I would rather see the lead that's in the school be resolved. So that's all I have to say.
I didn't, I didn't hear you. What was that last part? I didn't hear.
Yes, sir. Okay, really, there's the last one. Sir, right here in the middle. Too late, I already called on you.
Correct. It's just to go on the ballot.
All right, seeing, no integration, let's, there's a motion and a second, Article number nine. All those in favor, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red. Article nine passes. Article eight, do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I move that the town vote to approve Article eight is printed in the warrant and accept the recommendations of the Finance Committee and Capital Planning Committee for the fiscal year 2025 capital improvement plan.
Second. Okay, if a motion is second, I have the recommendation from the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
Yes.
Oh, you want to hear from us?
Recommendation.
Oh, the Board of Selectmen does recommend this, this comes from the Capital Planning Committee, and the Capital Planning Committee had several, had numerous requests, and this is, these are the ones that we've, that were approved by the Capital Planning Committee and should be, and the Board of Selectmen does recommend all of them, yes.
Okay, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to go by each department that's listed on Article eight, okay, broken down into Fire Department, Police, Highway, Water. We'll start with the Fire Department. The first item there is turnout gear for 74, 400, and the road remediation, mold remediation for 100,000.
Do you want separate motions like we did on the other?
Yes.
Yes, so I would move the 74,400 for turnout gear and 100,000 for mold remediation.
Second. I have a motion and a second for the Fire Department total. Any discussion? All those in favor of the Fire Department on Article eight as presented, please raise your green card. All those against, please raise your red card. Fire Department passes. We'll go right to the Police Department.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I would move that we purchase two police vehicles for 120,000 from free cash as printed in Article eight.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Moderator? Yes, sir.
If I may, Steve Goodman, 24th Ave. I see that we have 120,000...
Could you speak closer into the mic, sir? Yes, thank you.
I see that we have 120,000 allocated to two vehicles. I propose, based on, you know, recent events and the fact that our police chief is technically the harbor master as well, could we allocate half of that for a boat and some training for the harbor master? What happened on Sunday is inevitably going to happen again. There's no one that monitors the waterways in our town on a regular basis, and they're being used more and more often, and I don't see the need to replace two police vehicles in the same year. I mean, I, I don't see that either the vehicles are in disrepair, and I also see that we have in the budget for vehicle maintenance. Can't imagine we'd need that much vehicle maintenance money for two brand-new vehicles. So I propose an amendment, instead of two cruisers, we get a boat for our harbor master. I feel a little silly telling people I have a harbor master in my town that doesn't have a boat.
All right, let me find out if we can do that. All right, stand by.
If I understand the amendment, it was to take...
You would give 60,000, one of those 300,000, 120,000, take 60,000, get a boat and training.
All right, so we want to take 50,000 out of the 200 and, and buy a boat? That's, that's what he's asking.
Maybe 60 and 60.
Oh, 60 and 60, okay. I mean, I suppose he could do that, I don't see why not.
Mr. Moderator, I'd recommend that you acknowledge the police chief and he could comment on the impact and the necess, if this is necessary for his department, as he does serve as the harbor master and police chief.
I do. Last to fire chief, or the chief rather, to...
John Shaus, Police Chief. I appreciate the, you know, the, the motion for a police boat. I don't think 60,000 would be able to get us something adequate. I've actually been doing some research, actually before the, you know, the light of these unfortunate events, on what it would cost to have a boat that would be able to patrol both lakes and the training. We're actually holding a training this Friday with the environmental police, where they're going to do some boat safety for all the officers, because our, our intention is to get together with the Fire Department, utilize their boat to do some patrols on, on the, on the, the lakes. It's something that we should, the town should probably think about. I believe in years past, they did have a police boat, but it wasn't utilized or went in disrepair. So I, you know, there's a lot of validity to, to what the gentleman said. I think it's something that the town should think about in the future, but I think the 60,000 would not get us a, something, you know, enough to, to be able to, to, you know, safely patrol that, that, those lakes.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
So for those of us that have been here long enough, will remember that probably 30 years ago or so, we did initiate a boat patrol on the lake. It was in regards to similar instances that we had over the weekend, boats that were out of control and so on and so forth. At that time, we did have a patrol boat, but the, the incidental costs that go with that include staffing, and so part of the issue to do that at this point here would require us to negotiate with the policeman union as to how we're going to staff that boat, and it's, it's kind of a complicated matter. Way back then, we were able to use what we called permanent intermittent part-time policemen. We don't have those really now that would fit into this category. So although I 100% appreciate the thought, and going back 30 years ago, it was a really good idea, it, it, over the course of time, the boat went out of service, the boat was replaced, that one went out of service, it just hasn't been re-instituted yet. I do think we should look into it, I don't think we should do it at the expense of our routine replacement of police cruisers. Next year is a time, we would have time to think about it and actually make a proposal. So I, I, I can't recommend that on, on, under these circumstances, even though I do think it's a good idea in the long run.
Yes, sir. Sorry, oh, there's the one right behind you.
Hi, Don Barrows, 33 Ocean. So I guess a thought would be, why is the town going to pay for that boat anyways? It's a state pond. Or get the state to pay somewhat. They've got to do something since they don't do a Don thing for that water.
I would vote to amend the article to read 60,000 for one police vehicle with, you know, times being tough here. We have as a town, and I was the one that actually, when I was on the Finance Committee, that started the two vehicle per year, because it was eating up our budget of emergency funds on the Finance Committee. But at this time, we have money in, in the budget, and all of our cars, we've been doing this every year for, I don't know, at least six or seven years now, and we can afford to only pass one vehicle this year and save the money for other things that are needed. So I amend the article to 60,000 for one vehicle.
Is there a second?
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to amend, do I have a second?
Next.
There's a motion and a second to amend. If I got it right.
Do I understand the motion now being that we would reduce this item to 60,000 for one police cruiser, is that, that the motion? I don't know if the police chief wants to speak to that, I think he would be able to explain why we buy two cruisers.
So the cruiser rotation, like the lady mentioned, has been...
Chief, put it right, yep.
The cruiser rotation has been in effect for many, many years, it's worked out really well. So the plan for, for this year was to trade in a 2019 with 85,000 miles and a 2021 with 70,000 miles, which is the, the, the two vehicles with the highest amount of mileage. These vehicles run 16 hours, you know, normally, we have two officers assigned to each cruiser. My maintenance budget for all the vehicles in the fleet is 13,000. I believe everybody knows what the cost of maintenance is on their own vehicles is, 13,000 doesn't go very far. I'm level funded again this year, I don't, I mean, obviously, if, if town meeting decides to go with one cruiser, would have to go with one cruiser, but then I would have to, you know, find ways to supplement my maintenance budget, because I know that the other two vehicles that are also 2021s, one with 60,000 miles, the other with 55,000 miles, by 2025 would be in dire need of some, of repairs and maintenance.
Mr. Moderator, did you get a recommendation from the Finance Committee on the motion to amend?
Yes, sir. Finance Committee recommendation.
The Finance Committee does not recommend the revision to the article to reduce the police vehicles to one and the purchase of a boat for 60,000.
All right, the Board of Selectmen recommendation?
The what?
The Board of Selectmen's recommendation to the article.
The Selectmen do not recommend, do not recommend the amendment.
The amendment.
Right. So that's the first thing we'll vote on.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to amend the Police Department, police vehicles from 120 to 60. So all those in favor of the amendment, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. The amendment does not pass.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I would then move that we approve the 120,000 as reported in the warrant.
Second. We have a motion and a sec, on the police vehicle, two police vehicles as presented in the warrant. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red. Passes. Highway Department, road maintenance, 300,000 from free cash. Do I have a motion, please?
I would move that we approve 300,000 from free cash as printed in the warrant.
Second. We have a motion and a second on the Highway Department road maintenance. See no indication, all those in favor of the article on that particular highway department, please signify, bring... please signify, bring up, raise your green cards, getting late. All those opposed, raise your red card. Passes. Onto the Water Department. Treatment plant upgrades and the mini excavator for a total of five-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I would move that we approve the five-hundred-thousand-dollar treatment plant upgrades from the water retained earnings and the mini excavator for twenty-five thousand dollars from water retained earnings.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing all those in favor of the Water Department, as printed in the warrant, raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red cards. Passes unanimously.
Article five.
Mr. Moderator. What's that? Article five.
Just read the bottom.
I moved that town approve Article five as printed in the warrant.
Uh, second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Nazaroff, would you like to speak to that?
Yep. This is a housekeeping article that sets the maximum amount that can be spent during the fiscal year for each account. These amounts are unchanged from last year. There is one additional revolving fund as parks maintenance, which is being established under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three D, which the town has previously adopted.
All right, we'll do, we will check for a quorum. However, there's already a motion on the floor, so we have to finish the motion on the floor and then we'll check the quorum. Okay, so there's a motion on the floor on Article five. Any discussions? Seeing no indication of any discussion, all those in favor of Article five as presented in the warrant, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Passes. We have a quorum.
Article six.
Let's go.
Move on to Article number six. Proposed by the finance committee.
Mr. Moderator, I moved that the town vote to raise an appropriate sum of seventy-five thousand dollars to the reserve fund to cover extraordinary or unforeseen expenditures during the fiscal year 2025, in accordance with Chapter forty, Section six of the Massachusetts General Law, and to transfer from water retained earnings the sum of fifty thousand dollars to the Water Department Reserve Fund.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. We have the recommendation from the Board of Selectmen.
Yes, we recommend.
Okay, would you like to speak to your motion, sir?
Yes, I would. Mr. Moderator, this is an annual article that puts the funding aside in case of emergency and/or unexpected events. This funding can only be allocated by the finance committee throughout fiscal year 2025.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on Article six, as presented in the warrant. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red. Passes unanimously.
Article thirteen.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
I moved that the town vote to approve Article thirteen as written in the warrant.
Do I have a second?
Second. Sorry. Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I ask the town treasurer, collector, to give an explanation.
Hi, Treasurer Collector Linda McCarthy.
You've got to go real close.
Linda, right up to the mic, Linda.
Thanks. Treasurer Collector Linda McCarthy. Basically, this is a late fee that has been at five dollars for as long as I can remember. Everything is going up in cost, paper, ink, postage, so at this point, we just, it's feasible to raise it to fifteen.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no indication of any discussion, all those in favor of Article thirteen as printed in the warrant, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Passes.
Article ten.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I moved that the town vote to transfer from undesignated fund balance the sum of thirty-five-hundred dollars to support South Coastal Counties Legal Services Incorporated and their continued free legal service in civil matters to elders, low-income families, and their children.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Can I get the recommendation from the finance committee?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to...
Absolutely. So this is what I like to call the, one of the Troy Garen articles, because this was one that was near and dear to our former selectmen's heart. It helps bring free legal services to low-income families in the area, and I think it's a great article and I'm honored to speak to it. Just in the last quarter alone here in 2024, they provided services for ten cases here in Halifax, so legal services for folks that can really use it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of Article ten, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red. Passes unanimously.
Article fourteen.
Article fourteen. Do I have a motion? Are you looking, is there a representative from the Silver Lake School Committee? Have to go close. Thank you.
It's just my height, though. Paulahatch, Chair of Silver Lake, Oak Place. I moved that the town vote to transfer from undesignated funds the balance, the sum of thirty-nine thousand, one-hundred-and-forty dollars to support a part-time school resource officer for Silver Lake Middle School.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Finance committee recommendation?
The finance committee does not recommend, and I'd like to give an explanation, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to give an explanation as to why.
Sure.
So when this position was first put forth in town meeting, I think in fiscal year twenty-three, I believe, it was their understanding of this committee that the resource officer was going to, you know, be a new hire as a part-time employee. What we've subsequently found out that this position is being filled through detail pay from a Kingston officer at the rate of eighty-five dollars an hour, which the finance committee does not support.
Thank you. Board of Selectmen's recommendation?
Board of Selectmen hasn't voted on this, but we have not recommended it.
Would you like to speak to it?
Yeah, I question the date that you're using. We've had a resource officer in the middle school, a part-time one, that we fund fifty percent of, and Plimpton funds the other fifty percent of for several years now. Kingston, one hundred percent funds our resource officer in the high school.
Yeah, so I'm pretty certain it was fiscal year twenty-three. I was on this committee when it was first voted in, as well were a few others here as well. I know that there was a year prior to when we voted that Plimpton was funding the position as well. The subsequent year, the town residents felt it was their duty to also fund the remaining share, and so we approved the position, again, with the understanding that this was going to be filled as a part-time officer that would, you know, fill this role. Again, what we found out subsequent, though, is that it's being charged as detail pay, again, at the rate of eighty-five dollars an hour, which the committee feels is excessive for the position, and so on that basis, we do not recommend.
I'd like to ask the superintendent to comment on this. There's some legal reasons why that has to be, and we've been, we've been through this before, so I'm going to step aside and see if the superintendent will comment.
Sure. If you could just identify yourself, please.
Sure, Jill Prue, Silver Lake Regional School District.
You have to speak close, you're hard to hear.
And Union Thirty-one. And the way that it was described to me is that they need a full-time resource, they need a full-time officer, and that officer works year-round for the Kingston Police Department and then works part-time during that year for the middle school. We had discussed the benefit this current configuration has in the sense that Kingston pays for the full-time school resource officer at the high school, and I believe the benefit was that by doing it in this way, Plimpton and Halifax would split the cost of the resource officer at the middle school. Kingston has jurisdiction over the Silver Lake and high school and middle school campuses, and we basically don't question how their officers are paid, but we do, in fact, welcome the support of a school resource officer in our middle school.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no indication for discussion, there's a motion and a second, Article fourteen. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Article fails.
Article eleven.
Mr. Moderator?
I have no idea what you're doing, other than standing. You have to pick up the mic like everybody. Yep.
I'm challenging your decision. I think it passed. By voting that down, Brendan Arrowhead Path, by voting that down, did we just take a resource officer out of a school?
What we're going to do is, because the vote was challenged, we'll do a standing count and revote.
Does everybody know what they do?
Article thing.
Is the question. Before we revote, does everybody know what we just voted on? We just took an officer out of our school that protects our children. Is that what we, that, okay. Let's revote.
Does the town clerk have counters? We'll do the standing vote.
Volunteers for counters, please. Come on down.
No, if they're officer, they don't pay anything.
Okay, Article thirteen. We're going to do a standing count. The vote, I don't know if you caught that, but the vote was challenged, so we're going to verify what the vote was for Article thirteen. So all those in favor of Article...
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Guys messed me up. Article fourteen, let me, I'll re-explain it. The article is to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of thirty-nine thousand, one-hundred-and-forty dollars to support a part-time school resource officer or take any action thereof. Okay, so all those in favor of Article fourteen, please stand. Can all sit down, please? All those opposed to Article fourteen, as it appears in the warrant, please stand. Article fourteen passes.
Mr. Moderator, I moved that the town vote to transfer from undesignated fund balance the sum of thirty-five hundred dollars to support South Shore Resource and Advocacy Center for Domestic Violence Intervention and Prevention Services for its residents.
Second.
This is another Troy Garen article. It's a nonprofit that helps survivors of domestic abuse, and like the other one I mentioned, I'm proud to support this article.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion and a second. The finance committee recommendation?
Finance committee recommends.
Okay, any discussion? Yes. Oh, you're greening already. All right, all those in favor of Article eleven, please raise your green cards. All those opposed, please raise your red. Passes unanimously.
Article fifteen. Article 15.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Yes, I moved that the town pass over Article 15.
Second. Sorry.
And the explanation is that this article was placed on the warrant as we anticipated there being additional funding needed for this project at the high school. The updated project cost has not yet been identified, and we will need to put this on for the next town meeting.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do I have a motion and a second? To, so I have a motion and a second to pass over on Article 15. All those in favor to pass over, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red. Unanimous.
Article seven.
Oh, Article seven. Okay. Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Bruno.
I move that the town pass over Article seven.
Second. Sorry.
Motion and a second. Do you'd like to explain that, sir?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Again, this article, like the last one, was placed on the warrant as a placeholder. The town has been working to negotiate a payment in lieu of taxes agreement for the property, but has been unable to reach such an agreement. With no agreement in place, there's nothing here to be voted on. If we are able to negotiate an agreement in the future, it will be presented at a future town meeting.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to pass over Article seven. All those in favor, please to pass over. Please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your... Casts.
Article 12.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
I move that the town vote to transfer from undesignated fund balance the sum of $150 for the use of the trustees for the county cooperative extension service and authorize the Selectmen to appoint a town director within 15 days provided in revised Chapter 128, Section 41 of the Massachusetts General Laws.
Second.
Some motion and a second. The recommendation from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Mr. Nazaroff, would you like to speak to this?
Yes. This article allows the town to participate in the 4H Youth and Family Development Program.
Okay, all those in favor of Article 12 as presented in the warrant, raise your green cards in favor. All those opposed, raise your red cards. Passes unanimously.
Article 17. Article 16.
Article 16.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
I move that the town vote to approve Article 16 as printed in the warrant.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Would you like to speak to that, Mr. Dodgy?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. This article will provide an additional $75,000 in the town's unemployment account to cover any unemployment costs.
Okay, Board of Selectmen's recommendation?
We're into it. Sorry, it's getting late.
And Finance Committee recommendation?
Yes, Finance Committee recommends.
Okay, Article 16. All those in favor of Article 16, raise your green card. All those opposed, raise your red card. 16 passes unanimously.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
That concludes all of the articles except for Article 17. So I would move to adjourn to a time certain being Saturday, May 18, 2024, at 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at the Halifax Elementary School to take up Article 17 and thereafter to dissolve the town meeting. Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn till Saturday, May 18, 2024, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. All those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. Good night, and thank you so very much.
Thank you, everybody.